Um, okay, we'll get started. Uh, welcome to the seventh and final hearing of the inquiry into long-term sustainability and future of the timber and forest products industry. I acknowledge the Daddigal people of the Uora nation, the traditional custodians of the land, on which we are meeting today. I pay respects to elders past, present and emerging and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal tourist or Auldah people joining us today. Today we'll be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including academics, industry representatives and New South Wales government agencies. And I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. While we have many witnesses with us in person, some will be appearing via video conference today. And I want to ask for everyone's patience through any technical difficulties we may encounter. If participants lose their internet connection and are disconnected from the hearing, they are asked to rejoin the hearing by using the same link as provided by the committee's secretary. Before we commence, I would like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live via the parliament's website. The proceedings are also being recorded and a transcript will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. Consistent with our current COVID protocol, the hearing room is physically closed to members of the public. In accordance with the broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded that they must take responsibility for what they publish about the committee's proceedings. And while parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. So I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments you may make to the media or others after you complete your evidence. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it's important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry in terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness. According to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in two thousand and eighteen, if witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take the question on notice and written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within twenty-one days. If witnesses wish to hand up documents, they should do so through the committee staff. And for those participating in today's hearing via video conference, can I please ask everyone to state their name before speaking and to mute their microphones when they are not speaking? In terms of the audibility of hearing today, I remind both committee members and witnesses to speak into the microphone. And finally, could everyone please turn their mobile phones to silent for the duration of the hearing? I now welcome our first witness, Professor Roberta Ryan, uh, who is a professor of local government and executive director of an institute for regional futures and University of Newcastle. Uh, Miss Professor, can you please state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Thanks very much, it's Roberta Ryan. Um, I'm a professor of local government at the University of Newcastle and the director of the Institute for Regional Futures, a newly formed research institute. Um, you would like me, I would like to, uh, take the affirmation. Do you like me to read it or?
Yes, please. Yeah, yes, just read it out.
There is me, sorry, I don't know about Robert to hand, unhelpfully. Does somebody wanna, ah, okay, thank you. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Ryan, would you like to, uh, start by making a short opening statement? And, and maybe keep it to two to three minutes and then we'll, uh, start questioning.
Ah, yes, certainly. Um, we were engaged, uh, through a competitive tender process about eighteen months ago to do two pieces of economic assessment, um, on the establishment of the Great Kualan National Park. Uh, I won't go into the details of the Great Kualan National Park, I assume people know what that, uh, what that proposal is. We undertook two pieces of work, firstly, an economic impact assessment, which calculates the direct net and indirect effects of an increase in investment in the proposed park and the spending related, uh, in the five LGAs which, uh, which for which the proposed park would cover over fifteen years. We also undertook an economic benefit assessment, uh, which places a value on how much the, a dollar value on how much community is willing to pay to preserve biodiversity. Um, so I was happy to share with the committee briefly the findings of that. I can either do that now or, uh, at questioning, um, I can give you the headlines in two minutes if you'd like. Um, to establish and activate the park, uh, we calculated it requires about a hundred and forty-five million capital investment over fifteen years and about a hundred and twenty-eight million in terms of operating expenditure. We calculated the additional visitation and the value of that, um, and the, the direct and economic, the direct and indirect economic output of that, which, uh, is calculated at one point, uh, one point one eight billion for the region. This will create an additional nine thousand eight hundred and ten jobs in the region by the end of the fifteen years, lead to six hundred and seventy-five job losses in the state forest native logging industry in the first ten years and had, uh, significant biodiversity value. So that's the nature of the data. I'm happy to talk that through more. That's just the prepared lines for you.
Thank you. Um, now the committee's resolved just to do free flow questioning, so you'll, you'll get questions from all different, uh, committee members. Um, so I'm looking for someone to open up the batting.
I'm, I'm happy to start, Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, and thank you for your time today, Professor Ryan. Could I just check, are, are you able to, um, provide the report in full to the committee?
Yes, indeed, um, including, uh, detailed, uh, numbers and summary documents. Yep, absolutely happy to. It's a public report, yeah.
Oh, okay, it's on the public record, um, now?
Yes, but I'll make sure the committee has access to it.
Uh, that, that would be great. Um, look, I, I would like to delve into it in a little bit more detail because the committee, um, did actually visit, um, some of the sites in the proposed area. And we've, we've seen the area of forest and also spoken to some of those, um, that, that currently work in the timber industry in the public native forestry, um, state up there. Um, your analysis though, just to, to be clear, I mean, it's a pretty overwhelming shift in job opportunities in terms of the creation opportunities versus those lost in the sector. But I just wanted to get a sense of those six hundred and seventy-five job losses that you identified in the, um, the native, um, forest, uh, logging, uh, sector. Were, were they all harvesting and, uh, haulage and mill jobs? Or was some of that forest management? Because I assume that there's still quite a lot of management jobs in a national park, um, as distinct from, uh, that would, you know, that would be required additional to what's currently on the ground up there as part of the national parks or the public sector more generally.
Yeah, that's correct. No, yes, um, yes is the answer to both your questions.
Okay. Any idea sort of how, how that would offset? How many of those management jobs currently managing the state forests would actually still be employed in the management of the national park?
No, it's, it's difficult to assess that in terms of the, uh, the job numbers from, uh, forestry. We used their own data in terms of the calculation of those numbers. Didn't, didn't fact, we didn't factor in, um, the management jobs for, uh, you know, managing the national park, if not.
Okay. Um, and just apologies, my head's swiveling a bit because I've got you on a screen over here and a screen over here, but I appreciate you're probably looking at me there and it's quite awkward to engage with you, um, uh, in this questioning. Um, does your report, and, um, and I look forward to seeing it in full and having a read, but, um, whilst we were up on the north coast, there was an announcement about changes to private native forestry, um, rules, which I think are designed by a government to expand the opportunities for private native, um, forestry. Now, have you got any insights into how that, um, you know, would offset some of those job losses in the sector and provide alternative employment for harvesting, haulage and other forest management, um, workers who are currently in the public native forestry sector?
No, I don't, um, sorry, I haven't looked at that. This, this work was relatively narrowly scoped in terms of just looking at that potential uh, economic uplift of the establishment of the park and then doing that calculation in terms of the, uh, the economic value in the jobs.
Well, then just to, I guess, then the, the, the narrow specifics in, in your report, um, can you give us a bit of insight into that nine thousand eight hundred and ten jobs? I mean, I guess sometimes we, uh, we've heard, actually, I think, evidence, um, down the south coast. A little bit of, um, disdain for the general sense that, oh, you can just replace forestry jobs with nature-based tourism jobs or, or grand tourism jobs. Um, but can you just give us a bit of a breakdown, um, and give us a sense of the, the tick up in those? How, how quickly those jobs come into, into play according to your analysis over that fifteen-year period?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so the economic impact analysis, uh, it calculates the net direct and indirect effects of the investment in the park. And so as part of that, uh, we calculated it into, into three types of investment in terms of the, the capital investment, um, over the fifteen years. Look, we, we chose a time period of fifteen years for reasons which I can go into, but, uh, in terms of the data. And that includes, uh, you know, uh, magnitude and new changes, uh, construction of visitor centre, visitor infrastructure, uh, tracks and trails, that kind of investment, as well as operating expenditure, uh, which was the hundred and twenty-eight million and that's ongoing. Construction habitat management are the operation of park-based activities. So it's not all, the, the numbers of the jobs, uh, that we used were, are not just jobs as a increase as a, as a result of the uplift in tourism. It includes the park management, uh, you know, the establishment of the park, the ongoing park management, as well as the, uh, jobs estimated as a result of the additional, uh, visitor, uh, numbers. So it's the three kinds of jobs. And, and we estimated an additional one million visitors will spend, you know, the four hundred and twelve, uh, million in the region. And this is calculated as the spend in the five LGAs. So it's, it's, and, and some of that's been, that might be even across the five LGAs, that was spatial, uh, area. And so based on that, uh, additional total of direct and indirect, uh, that economic output, it's the one point eight, uh, eighteen billion in the region that leads to the assessment of the number of jobs. Um, and so the, the nine hundred, uh, the nine thousand eight hundred and ten jobs is the total job creation, uh, at the, over the period and at the end of the fifteen years. Um, so in terms of the, the job losses, the calculation, I mean, all these numbers are extremely conservative for reasons which you can imagine. Um, and, and so in terms of these, the job losses using, uh, the state native forest through, uh, logging industry's data, we calculated the six hundred and seventy-five job losses, uh, over a ten-year period, so the time periods do vary. So that's, that's the sort of, the, the detail. In terms of the, uh, the medium, so our estimate is that the medium term job losses in the state native forestry logging industry, um, will be obviously more than compensated by the creation of new jobs in the national park in terms of management and, and in ecotourism. And, uh, particularly opportunities for, uh, ownership and job opportunities for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Auldah people.
Does your report, um, give any consideration to what would be needed as part of the economic transition for those, uh, timber mills and those workers in the sector currently?
Well, we did it at, just at a very high level, um, by referring to the precedent for a New South Wales Government Industry, uh, Transition Support Package, which we estimated at, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand per full-time equivalent over the ten years and the buyback of any existing wood supply arrangements, um, for up to thirty million. So we have, uh, included those calculations in our numbers, although we know that there's no impact on, on logging on private land or hardwood, uh, plantations. So we were just looking at the, at the state forestry numbers.
So that's about a hundred thousand dollars per, um, worker in the sector more than, um, I think was, uh, committed to Blue Ridge down, um, in, uh, in Eden?
Eden.
Eden, yeah. Um, so just how, where did you arrive at the two hundred and fifty?
Um, I think we took advice in terms of where, what would be a reasonable number to calculate. I could go, I can take that question on notice through more precise.
Yeah, so I guess combining the two hundred and fifty and the, um, the package to buy out the wood supply contracts, what, what did you value that at, in your report in total?
Sorry, say that.
The, the, the combination of the two hundred and fifty thousand, um, per worker in the sector and the buyout of the, the contracts that would be required to offset the timber losses from a great Kualan National Park, what did you value that at in total?
Um, in, uh, up to thirty million in terms of the, the buyout costs.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Um, I guess one, one more quick question. I mean, you're, you're a policy, um, expert in this space and academic. You, you know, you've, you've considered these issues of economic transition before. You know, these can be sensitive issues as, um, you know, industries naturally decline and, and, and times change. Can, can you offer any advice to the committee on what we should be recommending to the government in terms of if they were to en- engage in this sort of transition? Well, you know, what, what should they be doing based on your experience to make sure that those whose, um, livelihoods are changing are, um, uh, their needs are met and the, and the greatest opportunities from that change can be, uh, gifted to the, to the community in that region?
I, I mean, it's advice that, that I think you find obvious. It's about involving people in these decisions, um, making sure that this is treated as a long-term, um, exercise, but recognizing, I think, um, the inevitability of some of these things and of course a planned transition is better than an unplanned transition. Um, I accept the arguments, uh, that are often made, um, that, you know, sort of tourism jobs, barista jobs, these are, many of these things are private sector jobs require investment in hotel rooms, you know, accommodation, visitor, uh, uh, you know, visitor facilities and so on. And they're not a direct one-for-one, but certainly the management of national parks, there's a lot of equipment skills in terms of the kinds of management, uh, that, you know, the, the, the management of the, the, the land as well as the management of the facility, uh, and the national parks. And many of those jobs are a good one. Um, but it, but it, it, the numbers are, I think, I mean, you do, you do this kind of, uh, research and I don't have the answer before you start. I think the numbers are pretty compelling in terms of, you know, well over nine thousand jobs with, you know, job losses, even if we're out by a factor of ten, you know, job losses of a thousand people.
Thank you, Professor Ryan. I'll hand over to my colleagues.
I'll throw to the deputy chair and then I'll throw to the other stuff there.
Uh, um, thanks Professor, it's Mick Veach, uh, here. Um, just a couple of questions following on from, um, Mr. Field. Um, so as a part of the transition, um, and the, the job, the job transition, did you also look at, uh, the impact on the mills in the, in, uh, the industry up there?
No, no, that wasn't part of our work, so.
So is that sort of the scope? So that's just another area of economic impact that is yet to be assessed?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, as I understand it, this work was looking at, uh, the impact on five LGAs, is that correct?
Yes, the, the, um, it, it was scoped according to the nature of the proposal uh, for the Great Kualan National Park. And so that was the spatial area that was used. Um, so if that national park is proposed to establish three hundred and fifteen, you know, three hundred and fifteen thousand hectare reserve on the mid-north coast, so, um, and that covers, uh, like, is located across the areas of Wellington, Clarence Valley, Shire, Coffs Harbour, Shire, Kempset, Nambuckah. So just that, the, the, uh, geographical scope of the study was determined by the proposal for the location of the Great Kualan National Park.
Okay, thank you. So when you, uh, were, um, assessing and determining the, um, uh, the impact on, on jobs, uh, you know, job lo- losses from the timber sector, but jobs then created in the, um, with the Great Kualan National Park proposal.
Yes.
Did you drill those down into communities themselves or was it just across the whole of the, uh, the, the park footprint?
Yes, there, there is some data in the report as to which, uh, which geographical areas would get, we, we, uh, assessed would get more uplift in terms of, you know, visitor accommodation, tourism and so on. So on the, on the job creation side, that's, that's the case, that, that the report shows some, uh, some of the spatial location of where we estimate those jobs would be. In other words, the, the, the nine thousand or so jobs won't be created evenly across the five LGAs. Um, your question might be, you might be more interested in where the job losses.
Yes.
Um, yes, and, and again, that is mapped according to the data that we've had, um, on where those jobs currently are located. And it, and it's, it's uneven.
Okay. Um, and as a part of this exercise, I'm not sure this is part of the scope, did, did it involve some sort of industry-wide skills audit? Um, so what, what skills are currently there, what skills would be required?
No, but, but in, in, in terms of that, the question that I just had, that would be, that would be an important piece of follow-up work. Um, in terms of, uh, understanding where, where the job capability is in this, in this, in this part of the world as well. Yeah, it would be, it would be useful thing to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bear.
Um, Professor Ryan, with the, the four hundred and twelve million visitor expenditure a year and the nine hundred and eight thousand jobs, that include, you mentioned baristas, so that includes the people, the money they're spending in shops and that sort of stuff. When they come.
Correct, yeah, yeah, based on the visitor spend, darling, yeah.
On the other side of the ledge of the jobs lost, did we take into consideration mechanics, the furniture, these people? That, so the people that have lost their jobs, you know, the money they would have spent on houses in town, school fees, club memberships, the tyre shop, have we, have we included that into there?
Yeah, we, we did. It, it, and it's, it's a formula that's used in terms of the direct and then what, what we call the indirect jobs, which are the sort of jobs that you're talking about. You know, the spend in the community from those, from those workers, uh, you know, yes, in, in terms of mechanics and all of that kind of stuff. So there's, there's a way to calculate that formula in terms of direct and indirect job losses.
So the six hundred, the six hundred and seventy or whatever you said, that's not just forestry workers, that includes, yeah, the mechanics and the guy in the furniture shop and that sort of stuff?
Well, six hundred and seventy-five is the direct job losses. The expenditure calculations include direct and indirect expenditure. But don't include, sorry, which is your question, I think, don't include indirect job losses. Is that, is that your question?
Yeah, so the nine hundred and eight thousand is apples compared to the six hundred and seventy oranges. You're not, you're not counting the, 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 the jobs you're counting there include the barista and the tour operators, but the jobs lost don't include the mechanic and the home repair guy and et cetera.
The job losses are the direct jobs, yes.
Yeah, okay, so they're sort of different, different numbers. Is it the same with the expenditure?
No.
The four hundred and twelve million.
Yeah, the expenditure figures include, uh, both the direct and indirect, if I can put it that way, the job loss number is direct job losses only.
And the, I, I guess the, the, the money lost out of the area doesn't include the counter lunch that the forestry worker gets on Saturday afternoon?
Yeah, but I assume that, that the state park management people have the same kind of, you know, engagement with the mechanic or, you know, needing somewhere to live as well.
But a lot of the money being spent in the town is outside money being spent, not money on school fees and club membership and those things.
No, but the, the job, the jobs that are created though is money that's being spent in the community by those workers.
Yeah, but yeah, I guess the, the jobs.
I, I know what you're, I hear what you're grappling with.
The jobs being created include the barista, but the jobs being lost don't count the tyre shop worker.
That's correct, but the expenditure figures do.
Okay. Bala.
Thank you. Um, I might just, um, pick up on some of that as well, just chair here. Um, the direct jobs, uh, in terms of national park management, how were those figures worked on? Because we, no offence to the government, the government has this history of underfunding national parks and doing it on a smell of an oily rag in terms of management. Um, so what were those staffing figures based on and how does that compare to numbers that would be in the forest at any given time at the moment, working in the forest?
Yeah, look, we, we relied on, it, th- these are difficult, um, numbers to get, um, and, uh, we didn't, um, again, if I could put this tactfully, we didn't secure uh, direct cooperation from the government, um, in the, in the process of doing this study. Um, so we relied on, uh, data, uh, that was published with respect to, um, the ongoing jobs for management of national parks. It's quite detailed in the report and again, I can draw that out and, um, you know, send that to you, uh, as a specific response, but we have to use the published estimates in terms of the operating expenditure, which includes the habitat management and the operation of park-based activities. That is, those are based on historical, uh, numbers in terms of the job, uh, management and operating, uh, employment numbers, which, um, again, which I think, um, would be fair to say are generally fairly low numbers.
Yeah, can you do offhand, can you tell us what the full-time equivalent staff would be for this national park? Did you go into that much detail?
Yeah, we did. I can't do it, I can't do it now, but I, yeah, I can provide that to you.
Thank you. Um, it, it, as part of your modelling, did you, did you look at as to whether this park would charge a fee for entry like other more metropolitan national parks as part of its economic modelling? Okay.
No.
Um, in terms of those, the nine thousand eight hundred jobs, how many did you say were direct? And how many did you say were indirect? Did you, I can't remember whether you said that in your summary. She didn't?
No, I think I did.
That's, I was trying, I was trying to scribble it down, but I, I couldn't scribble it.
Yeah, no, sorry, um. We calculated it at the nine thousand eight hundred, uh, additional full-time job equivalents. So, uh, that was the job creation number based on the expenditure estimates uh, for those three, um, phases, you know, the park establishment uh, and, and the construction phase and the operation phase plus the tourism jobs. So that's where the job numbers come from, those three, uh, estimates, the estimates of those activities.
But you didn't break it down in terms of how many were based on the, you know, the baristas and the terr- the terrorism versus.
Yeah, yeah, we have got that, yeah, we have got that. Out of that nine thousand eight hundred, we do have that right there.
Okay, would you be able to provide that on, on?
Absolutely.
For us?
Yeah, no problem.
That would be great. Um.
I'm happy to pull it out. The report's a bit long and turgid, I'm afraid, so I'll pull out those questions that you're asking me.
Yeah, that would be great. And, and in terms of those, those, I guess you'd call them indirect jobs, the, the, the eco-terrorism based jobs, did you get a sense of how many of them would be permanent, temp, casual or seasonal? You know, a lot, a lot of tourism work is seasonal, um.
Yep, that's correct. Yeah, no, we didn't. Um, we, we use, uh, the sort of visitor estimates and the expenditure estimates and then turn it into jobs, yeah.
Okay. Um, going to a question from the honourable Mick Veach about the, that you didn't include the mills and the impact on the mills, why was that? Was that out of, was that not included in the scope by the people that put the tender up?
It, it's just the volatility of the data.
Okay, what they, the mills didn't provide the da- that data on or?
We didn't have data on that yet.
Okay. Um, and the, the same thing with the five LG, LGAs, is that the same, same reason why you only looked at five LGAs? Because we know from, uh, wood supply agreements that there is a lot of, a lot of travel, uh, uh, with a lot of this wood that's going all around the state, it's not necessarily, you know, staying, staying in the south, there's wood travelling up from the south to the, the mid-north coast and so wa- was that also a, was, was that a limit of the, the tender process as well, that you only looked at those five LGAs?
Yeah, because we were looking at the, um, the economic impact of the establishment of the Great Kualan National Park. So that was the scope of our commission. So we looked at the the geographical location of the proposed Great Kualan National Park and those three hundred and fifteen thousand hectares, that is the proposal of the, for the reserve for the Great Kualan National Park. That's its geographical location. So it's the forest for activity. That's its geographical location, so it's the forestry activity in, in the state forestry activity in those five LGAs.
Okay.
Uh, by the same token, I guess we didn't look at the extra costs that'd have to come from importing that wood?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I guess, I guess the point I'm trying to get to is that, that's probably a bit of an oversight um, in, in this report, that it doesn't look at the impact o- o- of, of the mills, um. You know, not having read the full report, I can't comment on the rest of it, but I think that's just. Yeah, or the logistics industry, I think that's probably something that needs to be delved into, um.
Yes.
Before the government considers their decision, um, I think Mr. Field was looking to ask a final. Okay, um, well, that pretty much takes us.
I've got maybe one quick one.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
What, minus any state forests, they're pretty open to access and, and people can go in there, what would be allowed to happen in the national park that's not allowed to happen in the state forest?
Uh, that's a policy question, I'm afraid, um, I, I don't know, I, that I can answer that fairly, I mean, this, as I said, I, I know it's sort of irritating and it's irritating for us when, when we're doing this work. You know, we, we were engaged to assess the economic impact um, of the establishment of the Great Koala National Park, um. So we didn't have that lens as part of this work.
Ju- just on that then, Professor Ryan, because I know there's some who would be critical of the idea of taking forests out of um, forestry, but also the, the other public uses and, and, and other private uses, acry and the like. Um, and putting it into national park, would there be a lot of difference in terms of the economic opportunities if it was managed as a great koala park, um, but with features of state forests with different types of public access? Um, it just wasn't a national park, but it was a state forest that wasn't logged, it was primarily managed for its conservation values. Would there be a lot of difference in terms of the economic opportunities that would create?
I, I don't think I'm in a position to fairly answer that question.
Yeah. Um, okay, well, that, that pretty much takes us uh, right up to time, so thank you, uh, Professor, for your, your insight and uh, giving evidence today, um, you did take a few questions on notice, so the committee secretary will be in touch and you'll have twenty-one days to uh, get a response back, but once again, thank you for your, your time this morning.
My pleasure, um, thanks for the opportunity, good luck with your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome back to our next session uh, in today's hearing. Uh, we now welcome witnesses from Forestry Corporation New South Wales, we have Mr. Dean Keeney and Mr. Dean Ensign. I'll remind you both, uh, because you've always taken the oath or affirmation at an early hearing, we don't need to go through that process again, so we can
get straight into it.
Um, I would just ask whether either you want to make a short opening statement?
I do have an opening statement, I'll try and make it short. I'll give it a go, so, uh, Forestry Corporation.
Just pull the microphone around.
Sorry, is that just this way?
Yep.
Yeah. So Forestry Corporation is pleased to support the inquiry, um, we thank the committee for inviting us again here today. Since we last appeared formally here in Parliament House, we've been uh, pleased to host the committee at a range of locations, uh, and operational sites. Um, you've seen our major production nurseries in Etumet, native forests on the south coast and the north coast, hardwood plantations, softwood plantations, as well as our award-winning ecotourism facility at Sealy Lookout, uh, we also heard from our um, partners there, the local Aboriginal corporation. Um, we note the submissions and evidence provided to the committee that there's some strong interest in a few general subjects. Um, I'd like to take the opportunity, I guess, to provide some perspective on some of those matters, specifically biodiversity and carbon in the context of native forest management and also the current timber shortages and supply issues across both hardwood and softwoods. So in regards to biodiversity in native forests, I'd like to provide some context relating to the New South Wales forest landscape. Um, New South Wales has a forest estate in excess of twenty million hectares and it looks significant on a global scale. Now, within that twenty million hectares, around six million are set aside in formal reserves, the national park estate. Another two million are dedicated to state forests, which we manage as Forestry Corporation. Uh, there's around about three quarters of a million hectares in other crown lands and then the remainder, which is actually a majority, is a combination of forest and leasehold and private lands. Now, the reserve system, the six million hectares of forest, was expressly established under the RFA, so the Regional Forest Agreements, um, to include the forest with the highest conservation value across the public forest estate. And the state forests are dedicated to multiple purposes, which includes timber harvesting. In the forest where we produce timber and wood products, it's important to understand that this is done in a sophisticated way. A way that is fundamentally designed to meet ecologically sustainable forest management objectives. Now firstly, in terms of describing that process, which I'd like to do, firstly, around half of our forest are permanently dedicated uh, to conservation. They're mapped and permanently protected, either as a forest management zone, an old growth area of rainforest, a riparian zone, a threatened ecological immunity, various other uh, designations. This effectively provides a continuity of undisturbed forest as a continuous network of habitat in and around the areas where timber is harvested. Uh, that network is supplemented by a range of measures that are applied at the time of timber harvesting. So a range of surveys are undertaken to identify and set aside habitat, food resources for wildlife, including feed and habitat trees, hollow bearing trees, various bird species, koalas, gliders, a range of other species. In fact, every species and population listed in the Biodiversity Conservation Act has been considered in the design of those measures, the coastal IFWA. So the coastal IFWA sets out to ensure that the forest dwelling species that utilise our forest can coexist with regulated timber harvesting. And these conditions are methodically implemented by our staff in a planning process that takes many months. In this process, we use lot, we utilise the best available technology to manage operations, and I hope you had a chance to look at that when you visited our, our field sites. Uh, it involves some, solving some really highly technical challenges, not just in identifying the important habitat or the trees that must be retained, but in managing electronic mapping and GPS technology in remote environments. Um, but there are challenges that we've striven hard to design and implement, because they not only allow us to do our jobs to the highest standard possible, but they allow us to demonstrate through the collection of data um, in all of our operations. So we can demonstrate in any given year the identification and protection of many thousand hollow bearing trees, many thousand feed trees and various other trees kept for habitat or seed purposes. Um, we also monitor operations regularly, so us, there's dedicated staff within our organisation for doing this. We're subject to external audit by either the EPA or DPI, depending on the type of harvesting it is. Um, we are subject to external certification auditing, um, to obtain the responsible wood Australian forestry standard. On top of this, the New South Wales Forest Management System, which we're one part of, undertake a range of monitoring and research to ensure that our forest management approach is adaptive and utilizes the best available science to inform our forest management practices. But there's also a wider balance we must achieve, and that is about ensuring that our operations are sustainable in the long term. And it's important to ensure that our forest can provide a continuous supply of renewable wood products in perpetuity. So to this end, we maintain wood supply modelling across a hundred years in our native forests and over multiple rotation in softwood forests that set the sustainable limit for harvesting in the current year. And those calculations are regularly updated, they're informed by new in-forest measurements, new remote sensing data and continuous modelling improvements. These processes are also fundamental to understanding and managing positive carbon balances from our state forests. Uh, we note that the international or the intergovernmental panel on climate change recognise that sustainably managed forests and production of forests can maintain carbon in growing trees, produce an annual yield of timber and deliver a sustained climate mitigation benefit. So essentially, our wood products are carbon positive. Our forest management system and timber harvesting, when done sustainably, can be part of a solution to climate change. So not only do we sequester carbon in the forest we grow, we store it in the products um, that we produce and we also can substitute wood products for more carbon intensive and polluting alternatives. Now, in relation to current timber and wood product shortages, uh, the timber products that we grow are provided to industries it, for many and varied purposes, you would have seen during your studies. Renewable timber, um, that communities need for home and infrastructure is one part of it, there's also power poles. Uh, there's timber for pallets for good transport, there's paper packaging, there's what, paper and packaging and a range of other products. Um, in terms of timber shortage and supply, it's worth noting that the state forest estate has never been able to supply all of the needs of New South Wales or Australia, and Australia remains a net importer of wood products. Now, the twenty nineteen, twenty fives were a very significant event for us and um, there were a lot of impacts across a lot of our forests. Um, but we have been responding to that in a number of ways, including recalculating sustainable and long-term yields. Um, in particular, in the softwood plantations, uh, I'm happy to report that we're well ahead of our planting target or our replanting target. And we will have fully restocked our fire affected plantations by twenty twenty-six. Those plantations are actually growing really well because of the prevailing conditions we've had since then. I can report that, uh, just yesterday, we started our planting programme for this season, where we're planning to have ten, oh, well over ten million seedlings again planted this year. Um, in the native forests, we undertook modelling immediately after the fires to determine, you know, through a modelling process, any adjustments that immediately needed to be undertaken regarding supply levels. And we're now working through a process of updating our models with infield uh, inventory. And uh, that's all happening ahead of the scheduled RFA review in twenty twenty-three. So that's just an update, I want to pro- provide the committee and thank the committee for the opportunity to answer questions.
Thank you, um, given that that was a pre-prepared statement, are you prepared to hand it up to the committee secretary, that way we get your words a hundred percent right?
Yeah, certainly.
Excellent, um, I might just start off with a couple of questions and then we'll throw it around the room. When we were out in Oberon and we were visiting the Essington State Forest, um, one of the Forestry Corp uh, staff there mentioned that they were, had gone out and gone out to a couple of land auctions to see, I guess, get a taste for what it would need to, you know, purchase some more land for some softwood plantation. Um, but they sort of said, oh, well, we're totally out, outbid. So I, I just wondered, what is that magical figure uh, in your mind that you'd be prepared to pay for, um, for new land for softwood plantation? You know, you might not be able to give an exact figure, but you know, where's your cutoff point in terms of, you know, a price per, price per hectare?
Um, especially seeing how one of my competitors is sitting behind me, he would compete for land. Look, can't give you the exact figure, would love to put something together formally, but one of those auctions, it went for three hundred percent of what we were considering.
Yeah.
So we'll put something in writing to you separately.
Yeah, that, that'd be fine, and I, I did note from the opening statement, you, you know, you noted that we'll, we've never been self-sufficient and been able to supply our own, our needs. To give it, you know, the committee a sense of what it would take, you know, or how far out we are from being self-sufficient, what would it take for us to supply our own, own needs? Is it well beyond our capabilities in terms of land availability or?
Potentially, yes, in that, um, we import about thirty percent of our timber need.
Yep.
So roughly, you know, there's another thirty percent hold in the land that we would need at a minimum to be able to meet that. The other thing is matching the different wood products for what we use. So at present, you know, a lot of the hardwood was used for lentils and beans, where you needed those high-strength products. So they've been replaced with LVL over time. And at the moment, about forty to sixty, sixty percent of our LVL comes from Russia. So basically, we've replaced native forest with Russian timber.
I'm looking for others to jump in.
Just on that though, but that's a, that's not because the native timber's not available for that at the moment. That's because that product is cheaper and more easy to use, right? There's no barrier to us producing LVL here in Australia, we just, no one's made that investment yet, that would be correct.
So at the moment, all our timber tends to go into more structural products rather than LVL. Yes, it's more competitive to do it overseas.
Yep.
Can I, so, um, first of all, I just want to thank uh, uh, Forestry Corp for the way in which they've assisted the committee in this inquiry. Um, number of site visits, as you mentioned in your opening statement, I just want to again plug that Lowring Nursery, I think is just a superb um, asset for New South Wales and so it was good to have a look at that. Um, just recently, West Australia has followed the Victorian um, uh, decision to stop hardwood harvesting uh, in those states. What has been the impact of that, of those, the decision in those two jurisdictions on, um, I guess, the supply in New South Wales? Has there been an increased draw on our supply for hardwood? Has it, or has there been no impact at all?
I'm not aware of any specific impact arising from the Western Australian announcement. I understand that, um, some of the Victorian supply is intermingled with supply with some New South, New South Wales customers. Um, it's not something that we would be able to inform specifically, it's probably a question for those, those customers that are impacted. So where they withdraw timber, perhaps both from New South Wales and from Victoria. So I, I don't have a complete picture and I don't know that anyone in our organisation would.
And one of the reasons that we really can't respond is we operate on a sustainable level. So the ability to generate more.
Yeah.
Yeah, so our customers are quite clear about what limits they've got, so it's not like they can come back and ask for more.
Yep, okay, thank you, um, one of the submissions, um, I forget which one it was now, but that, I should write that down. But one of them spoke about the fact that New South Wales uh, government contracts, construction in particular, should be using timber uh, grown and sourced in New South Wales. Have you actually advanced that, uh, that argument at all to um, treasury and, and the, the powers that be in New South Wales?
Not, not as the Forestry Corporation, those um, type advancements come through the different timber organisations. More the industry representatives rather than from the Forestry Corporation.
Okay, good, I'll ask that, I'll leave that there, I'll ask them. Um, can I also, uh, in our travels, um, uh, and I think it was up in Coffs Harbour where it was the sort of first time I actually got a good handle, was actually able to see firsthand the involvement of, um, uh, local indigenous groups, First Nations people, uh, in, um, using the land that Forest Corp uh, have been bestowed responsibility to manage. Can you just advise the committee, um, what steps you are taking to increase, um, I guess, cultural and, and indigenous knowledge in, in the management of our state forest?
Sure, and so we, we have um, indigenous involvement in every operation. So any time a, a harvest plan is put together in timber harvesting, there's cultural heritage surveys, there's, you know, there's, there's, there's involvement there, that's all coordinated by our Aboriginal partnerships team, so we have a dedicated team, that, um, five or six people. But um, their job is to liaise with uh, local Aboriginal groups, local Aboriginal community, um, not just around those surveys though, but also around partnership opportunities. And so, um, we've seen partnership opportunities in terms of, um, some of those tourism and recreational developments like you saw in Coffs Harbour. There's also cultural learning experiences that I'm aware of in, um, the Bullard dealer area. Um, there's partnerships with land councils around the place to look at, um, a burning on country as well, so uh, cultural burning. So there's, there's a range of initiatives we have taken, um, and uh, it, it is something we're very keen to continue to promote. And we have a dedicated team to that, um, I guess it's, um, it is something my, my personal observation would be, there's, there's, there's an enormous room for growth. Um, and, yeah, and that's, that's a real opportunity.
Yeah, I think, I think the committee would agree, um, also, so I've got two more questions, Chair, um, can I? The hardwood sector employment, I'm trying my hand along the numbers within Forest Corp that are actually engaged in hardwood. So both, um, your hardwood plantation, but also um, in our native forest, um, harvesting there. Can you, is it possible to get the current figures for the committee, you may take that on notice, but get the current figures of the employment uh, in Forest Corp in, involved in hardwood?
Yep.
That, that would be good, and if it's possible, maybe location, I just want to get more of a handle on that, because I, I just haven't got a handle on where they all are.
Fair enough.
Yep.
I mean, I can give you a, a brief overview if that's of use.
Brief overview and then take it on notice.
Obviously, we've got staff spread right across the, um, states, so we have western districts that go, um, almost all the way to every quarter. Uh, we've got, we, we have our coastal staff spread from Casino in the north all the way down to Eden in the south. Um, there's around about, across that footprint, around about two hundred and fifty staff that are in permanent roles. During the fire season, there's a, a range of staff, up to fifty staff on any given time that are available for fire fighting on a more of a casual basis. Um, and some of those people do also undertake casual work year-round as well.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of contracting, uh, we'll have to take that on notice, but there's probably an order of thirty, forty harvesting crews with three to four people in each of those harvesting crews, plus other, I guess, people in, in the, in the back room that do support to those contracted as well.
Yeah, okay, that'd be good, thanks.
The directors.
I, I, I'll miss, miss, uh, the committee, I've actually got two more questions now after that last question, um. Yeah, off the privileges for me, acryists, um, it's, it, it's been raised, uh, with me and I think maybe some other members of the committee, but but a pretty important stakeholder that you have to work with are the local aprists. When we were looking down at Mogo at the proposed bike track, one of the aprists, after they, once they found that we'd been there, rang me to say they were pretty concerned because they had a pad that they use to put their hives on, and it's pretty, if not adjacent to, pretty close to where this proposed bike track is going to be. And they would like to have been involved, I think, in a greater detail in the discussions about that because they don't want people just turning up riding on the bike track to suddenly find there's a whole bee hive's been put there overnight. Just what is the, is there a formal process for Forest Corp to work with aprists in New South Wales? And, and that's the first part. Second thing is, that aside, how do we work with aprists on the ground at a local level? I mean, they do, they're pretty transient, they move their hives around quite rightly. So how do we engage with them? Has Forest Corp engaged with them there?
So we, we provide permits for the, for the B sites, or the B ranges that they're called. So we, we just provide a permit that has a geographic boundary, and they can put their, their actual set down sites within that boundary as long as it's not in an area that's to be excluded because it has the, you know, oil growth or rainforest, one of those other values that you can't put a set down site in. And we just, we just provide those permits and allow them to undertake that activity in that way. In terms of the example around the mountain bike track, I'm not sure what processes happened there. It's, it's something that I don't have oversight of and I don't think you'd have an insight to either. So we'd have to take that on notice, but it, it should in the normal course of events be that stakeholders like that are part of a process of consideration of designing mountain bike tracks. So can't imagine the mountain bikes is like riding close to the bees as well.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, based on the phone call, I'm not sure whether they hadn't been engaged or whether they had been engaged, but I don't think it was sort of a, to the people who are actually involved in using that set down, set down pad. Anyway, if you can take that script.
Yep.
And the last one to rack this up today for me is the weeds and pests issue. Now, as we've travelled around, I think, one fellow, Jim, had said there was, I don't know, what is it, 49,000 hectares of softwood plantation near him, around him, and 48,000 of those are blackberries. And then when we're up on the north coast, there was discussion around camp for laurel. The Honorable Taylor Martin now knows what a camp for laurel looks like.
Thanks, mate.
But it is actually quite a serious issue. And I, I, I know that you undertake activities around managing weeds and pests, but my take, may not be other members' take, community's take, but my take on the information we've been provided as we've been travelling around and talking to people is that it's not enough, that there has got to be a, a, a much bigger effort in combating weeds and pests on Forest Corp land. I guess, first of all, do you think that's fair? And secondly, if we were to ramp up, what would you want this committee to be recommending to government?
You want to go first?
In terms of what we'd like recommended to government, it must probably that funding of the cooperative approach, where we're trying to work together with the wider community in terms of a lot of these weed species. And if we take, you know, the favourite for the timber area, blackberry, is the funding that's at a federal level for that weed is minuscule. And the idea of looking for a biological control is most probably imperative, because as we discussed onsite, the biggest issue is finding a herbicide where we can treat the blackberry but not kill the trees. So if we could have a biological control that could just, it won't eliminate it, but reduce its virility. There were some trials in WA, there was a concern that it didn't stay with the blackberry, it did attack other areas. So it's not a simple measure, we don't need another cane tote event. But to make sure we don't get a repeat of that, if we could fund it properly at the national level, that'd be good. And that's similar with a lot of weeds, because it's about a total approach. As we talked onsite, you know, we certainly upped the ante at the reestablishment to minimize it. And we have been trialling about that first thinning approach where we can take a machine through the stand and spray, and because the trees are tall, it's not getting onto the needles of the tree. So we're actually able to knock the blackberry back at the head of it. And we've budgeted for 50,000 hectares per annum for that. So certainly lifted, but there is a coordination approach, and there's some key weeds that we need to work together on. The camp for laurel, we've done things on the north coast where we've actually looked at that in terms of the biofuel. You might be able to explain a bit more where we got to with that.
Yeah, sure. It's only a trial stage at this, at this point, but we have looked at taking up mature camp for laurels at the time of harvesting and using those as biofuel. So using the logs where we can, where they can be utilized, and there are some people that are interested in buying small amounts of camp for laurel logs, but also then looking at chipping the remaining camp for laurel, using that as an opportunity to reduce, I guess, camp for laurel on those sites. But going back to what Dean said, I guess, camp for laurel is a weed that is across ten years, it's quite dense in parts of the landscape. If we're, if I was to make a recommendation to the committee, it would be that the, the committee look at those consultative mechanisms through the weed, weed councils, and look at allowing them to, I guess, prioritize where spinning should be. Certainly, there was, there's always more you could be doing, but in terms of establishing priorities, there's a mechanism out there for doing that already, and it's, it's through that mechanism, not a recommend looking, because they haven't overview all the different tenures, those weed committees. So there's a range of other, less high profile weeds, like tropical soda apple, lanthorn, there's, there's, and almost an endless number, and there's always more we could be doing. And some of them are, you know, really nasty and need to be controlled, others are just sitting waiting.
Yeah. And just quickly, you do have, you have said at the title with those weeds committees, is that, that's correct?
That's correct, yeah.
At, at the local level?
Yes.
Yeah. Looking for, yeah.
Thanks, Dean. Dean, for being here and for, yeah, your support. I think we've all learned a lot over the trip so far and speaking to you. But I just want to turn to koalas quickly, and it was a topic of discussion up in Coffs as well. Just on Friday, the New South Wales Threatened Species Scientific Committee uplisted the koala to now be declared an endangered species in New South Wales. Just wondering how that will change your current and planned logging regime on the north coast in particular?
There's, there's not a direct implication of that change in terms of, it doesn't immediately affect the coastal life away. What the coastal life away does is put in a range of measures for koalas. As you'd be aware, it requires a protection of feed trees in all the identified habitat. I guess the other thing that the coastal life way has in it is a range of adaptive mechanisms. So there is, there's formal reviews of it that are required each five years. Any additional information regarding species such as koalas or any species of that matter can be assessed at that time. You'd be aware that there's lots of research happening in the space.
Sure.
There's lots of initiatives happening in the space, and you, as we showed when you're in Coffs Harbour, we're actively participating in all of that. We're across the most recent research, and we are part of that adaptive process.
So the Threatened Species Scientific Committee specifically identified logging. It looked at broader land clearing as well, including for urban development and agriculture. But it identified logging as one of the reasons. Logging in the last 20 years is one of the reasons where the koala populations have declined to a point that they're declared endangered. I mean, you're currently logging in Gerard, you're at, and Sherry, Sherry State Forest, all three of those that have identified koala hubs, which is the environment department's analysis of some of the most critical koala habitat. And you've got planned and proposed logging on your portal in Wild cattle creek, Clouds Creek and South Gate Creek. So you're telling me the uplisting to endangered, the fact you're logging in, the best of the koala habitat is identified by the government's own agency as important for protection, doesn't change your operations in effect?
Well, I guess, I, I haven't looked at the determination in the weekend myself, and the reference to, I think, of timber harvesting was in relation to it could have an impact on koala populations if it changed the, the species dynamics of the forest, the species levels within the forest. That was the way it was couched. I had a look at the root research for that as well. And look, I'm not aware of any, any data or any research that shows that our activities and our harvesting regime change the species composition of the forest we operate in. I am aware of research that shows that koalas are persisting within our forests, that we've got good robust research to show there's ongoing occupancy before and after harvesting. In terms of that, that proposition around changing species, it is built within the coastal life away, that we have to regenerate sites that we harvest. And that regeneration has to be consistent with the existing forest types. So I am confident that the, the harvesting that was pointed to or described in that research and uplifted into that listing is not necessarily consistent with what we do, and that the risks to koala populations have been addressed through the development of the coastal life way, and that there is robust research to show that those measures are working.
If logging was neutral or positive for koalas, you wouldn't see declining koala populations in state forest areas, which this report points to, all populations in New South Wales and other clubs.
I don't think it points to that, yeah.
Well, actually, just on the record, forestry corporation's position, do you consider your logging activities in core koala habitat as positive, negative, or neutral in terms of koalas?
All I can do to answer that is point to the, the research that's been recently published that shows that regulated timber harvesting, the way we undertake our timber harvesting, allows for the persistence of koalas in our forest landscapes. That's, that, that's the contemporary research view that I have available to you. And it's, it's very contemporary, I understand that research quite well, so I do understand what it's looking at.
Understand. And you understand it's still quite contested, but we've heard other evidence to that effect. I wouldn't mind just moving on quickly to contracts and their status. Can you update the committee? Have any of the north coast wood supply agreements which are currently due to expire in 2023, the non-borel pentark ones, have any of those been renewed at this stage?
I'm not 100% certain about the status of that. I, I understand the discussions towards those extensions are underway, and there is an intent to extend those, but I can't tell you exactly what point they're up to. I'm going to take that on notice.
I think the original intent was, that would be sort of government, put a timeline down of March, you know, nearly at the end of May. So has there been a reason for the delay, you know?
I, I, I'm, I'm just not close enough to it to, to, I guess, for you. Most of my work happens in the, at the forest end rather than the, the log yard.
Sure. So I went back and had a, a look over the last 10 years in the sustainability report, and actual volumes taken out of the forest have been well below what forestry corporation determines is the sustainable yield from those forests for every year since 2011, which I think is the, the, the most historical data available in the sustainability reports. So obviously, things have changed since the fires, but can you give us a sense of why? I mean, it suggests to me that either the timber wasn't there and your sustainable yield analysis is, is not correct, or if there's another explanation for why actual harvest has been below sustainable yield, can you give us a sense of what it is?
Sure.
Sure. Prior role was general manager hardwoods. So in those early years, we had a couple of wet years, so there was underperformance there. And the sustainable yield includes a full range of timber products and timber species. And the demand's not uniform for all the species. So at times, we don't sell right up to the sustainable, because there are some species people don't want or can't find a market for.
So in 2014, despite the fact that for the years before you were, the harvesting under the sustainable yield, there was the buyback of 50,000 cubic meters.
So that, that's why I paused, because the period, including 2011, sort of overlaps the buyback period.
Yeah. But that's my point, is that you bought it, you, you weren't logging to that rate, but you still had to buy some back, and you, you haven't logged it in your sustainable yield rate either. And I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
To, to get the numbers precise, we'll probably have to take on, on notice, but, but in general terms, at, at that point, the level of timber that was allocated under wood supply agreements was above the sustainable yield calculations. The, those sustainable yield calculations had been reviewed over time. At that point, those commitments were above, and we did that in order to bring the wood supply agreements back in line with long term sustainable yield. That was a 2014 process.
Yeah, I'm just comparing it to what you actually took out of the forest versus the sustainable yield, so I'm not sure that that analysis quite makes sense. But I need to put some, if you're okay with answering.
It's a complicated question, unfortunately, because, and then there's lots of different supply zones, the south coast, north coast.
And the buyback was focused on that species group.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, you know, we're considering the future of the timber industry. One of the views out there is that we should start to exit the native forest, the native forest timber industry. And I'm trying to understand what sort of volumes of timber are we talking about having to, you know, to potentially buy back or find in, in, in other sources? And the, the data, there's questions around the accuracy of the sustainable yield assessments as it stands, and, and I think you've even acknowledged it's going to have to be looked at once you can do the fieldwork, because there's uncertainties there. And historically, you've not logged it, you've also been buying back quota. And so it just seems to me that the data doesn't match, and I'm just trying to get a better handle on how much would it cost to buy out those contracts in effect? And I'm wondering if you do renew those contracts at the current levels, given that you haven't historically even been logging at, at those levels, which I assumed your contracts are based on, aren't you just basically saying, what, aren't we just setting up a liability risk that we don't need to by renewing those contracts at levels that you've not historically been able to deliver at, and you probably won't be able to deliver at? So why would you sign at those levels?
So the proposition around historical levels of supply against long term wood supply, I think we'd have to ask you to provide that question.
Yeah, okay.
Specifically, so we can have a look at the numbers. But I guess in principle, going forward, we plan our wood supplies to set over 100 years. So it's, it's a modeling process. So it, it requires a level of sampling, data, various models to drive what, what yield we could have. And that's over 100 years. But the regional forest agreements lock us into, at a minimum, a five yearly review period for all of that. They lock us into using the frames process and data collection from inventory to make sure that that is a contemporary process, and we're working on that constantly. And so every five years, there's an opportunity to review and to, to correct. And so we're not talking about putting in place 100 years of harvesting based on the models today, we're talking about putting in place five years of harvesting based on a 100 year paradigm. And so I'm confident that the process is robust, and that there's an opportunity to correct as new information becomes available, and continuous improvement, adaptive management is what is built into that system. So we will constantly be updating our models and constantly reviewing wood supply. And there has been times in the past where wood supply and the, the modeling have been out of sync through various historical processes about decisions about reserve levels against wood supply agreements. The corporation has done everything it can to bring wood supply agreements and long term sustainable yield together, and make sure that's one single picture.
Thanks, Jeff. This time I've got some that'll.
Yeah, I'll start Mr. Barrett first.
Are you able to touch on what, you've obviously got your Forest Corp employees, what outside industries and businesses do you support in those areas? And maybe in your answer, touch on how dependent they are on, you would think they are on your operations?
Oh, there's, there's whole communities that are very heavily dependent on, on the activity we undertake. So communities like Grafton, for instance, in the hardwoods, and Tumit, Tomberumba, Oberon, there's, there's communities for whom forestry is a key employer. So it's, it really isn't even just us or the contractors we use or the suppliers of machinery, it's actually the entire community that, that we're a key contributor to in those areas. I mean, this, it's quite difficult to put statistics around this. I've, I've read bits and pieces around what are called employment multipliers, I've read AVER statistics. I, I don't quite know which one of those numbers would be the best to provide, but we can provide you with, with that kind of information. But all I can say is that, yeah, some of the, the communities we work in, we're, we're a key industry in.
Yeah. So in terms of, just sort of broadly answer it, so we'd have contractors who do the harvest, do the haul, and so they're separate commercial operators, private individuals, then they would sell, we sell to sawmills, paper mills and others. And where, where the criticality is, we're quite often the base and the core supplier. So through that, they're then able to leverage off our estate in terms of being able to buy off other growers. And if you don't have that base area or the base volume out of either the hardwood or the softwood, then you get it collapsing with cards because there's no scale. We offer that real major core scale that enables all those other things to leverage off. So when you ask what numbers of individuals' income would actually be dependent on our continued existence, the number multiplies very quickly, because if you no longer have that scale, the whole industry just disappears out of the area. And that, if you look at somewhere like Bombala or Tomberumba or Tumit and Oberon, that big impacts.
Dean, you mentioned. Um, can you mention before that substituting wood in, and I think you said more carbon intensive products in your opening statement? Can you touch a bit more on that? And I guess we're looking at the whole thing.
There's 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 probably one really um straightforward example of that, and that's that's utility poles or power poles. So wood is the preferred um product for that. Uh, it's preferred product for a number of reasons. Um, you know, the the alternatives would be concrete or steel. Um, so the those alternatives are are, I guess, uh, less preferred because they are more difficult to handle. They're more expensive to produce. Um, they are more difficult to put up in service. They are not natural insulators as is the timber. So there's a whole range of reasons why um a timber pole is the preferred product there. And when you look at it from a um a carbon perspective, timber, which has been grown, sequestered carbon against. Either concrete or steel, it's clearly a preferred option as well. So um when we talk about reducing supply of products from our forest, then we we're talking about. Uh, substitutes or alternatives, and those substitutes or alternatives are often um from industries that are more carbon intensive.
When we talk about the difference between a state forest and a national park and making something a national park, you know, attract more visitors. What can someone do in a national park that they can't do in a state forest?
Um, I'm not sure there's much you can do in a national park that you can't do in a state forest, but it would be actually the other way around. Where there's there's a whole range of activities that are allowable in a state forest that aren't allowed in a national park. So that's where um obviously activities like regulated hunting, um, you know, recreational forward driving might be possible in a national park. It's certainly discouraged. Um, there is more opportunity for those kind of activities in the forest. There's, you know, horse riding, anything that involves bringing your dog along. Um, there's a whole range of activities you can do in a state forest that actually aren't appropriate in national parks and aren't allowed in national parks. And um, you know, that includes that we we have free camping areas and things of that nature. It's it's simpler for us to um allow for recreational activities, including motor rally, motorsports. Um, and uh, anything that, I guess, requires the other horses or or other animals like that. It's it's much easier to do those permitted activities on a state forest.
Presume you have some questions?
I was just gonna open that up for them to add anything that they didn't think they've covered or.
Could I have just one follow up on that question from Scott? Just on the on the power poles, do you have any sense of how many actual sticks you sell each year to the electricity sector?
I would have to take on notice, but it's it's quite a few. We um, we're the major supplier across Australia.
And can they conceivably be a plantation hardwood?
Uh, they could conceivably be, but the thing about a power pole, it um, they have to have certain properties. So um, they talk about a kilonewton rating, which is all about the species of the the pole.
What species are preferred?
Uh, well, so it's, there's a range of species that can be used and it's all about the density of the timber. And there's there's class one and class two, or it depends on the diameter of it as well as to whether it can be used.
What's their ideal?
So their ideal is a is a twelve point five, four kilonewton pole, so twelve, four point five meters long. And.
Tallow wood.
Tallow wood, fine. But we do sell blackbuck and other stuff.
So there's a range of species that are durability class one, which includes tallow wood, ironbuck and um various other things like guppy messmate and some of the mahogany's. Uh, but uh, blackbuts, potagum are also um very suitable, um, but they have to be of certain dimensions and very striking.
Can I ask just a quick question and maybe given the time, just for you to take on notice, please? Um, we've got evidence um expressing concern, giving, given the supply chain issues at the moment. Um, um, that um, there is need to introduce an even more rigorous system. To ensure that substandard and non-conforming timber doesn't enter the supply chain. Um, and they also, not only we're talking about internationally sourced products, but domestically sourced as well. Um, could you please just take on notice on what role you may play in that and what you think that system should look like?
Yeah, we'll take that on notice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pullos, do you have any questions? You were sitting there patiently.
No, no, fine. Thank you, Chair.
All right, um.
One more, if I could, Chair.
Well, I was.
Very quickly, but they might take it on notice, which is fine. I I I was just trying to break down where the money goes here. And we asked the question when we went and visited the P and F site, you know, we pointed to a tree, said, how much does that tree worth and who gets what out of it? Are you able to give us a sense of a, you know, two cubic meter blackbuck from the North Coast forest? How how much do you pay your contractor? How much is the haulage? How much does the mill pay for it? And how much do they get for the timber that comes out of it? Just to give us a bit of a sense of, you know, what are the economics here? Because, yeah, we haven't quite been able to understand that yet, I don't think.
Yeah.
It might be difficult.
It's 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 difficult to take, I have to take on notice. It's difficult because there there's a range of dynamic factors around that, like including.
Just even generality.
Yeah, we can look at averages and things to to provide some overview, but I'd have to, I'd have to go away and do that for the next.
We haven't nailed that.
No, we haven't.
Well, that pretty much takes us right to ten forty five, unless there's something that you think we've missed or you'd like us to. Think we should focus on uh in our final deliberations. I'll give you an opportunity.
I'm very happy that we've had the opportunity to talk and hopefully we've made sense. Um, so I appreciate the time.
No, I think the main thing is we're still open, so if there's any questions that arise as you do your deliberations, please don't hesitate to ask.
And and once again, thank you on behalf of the committee for all all the effort you've put in showing us around throughout the high inquiries. Yeah, I don't think we could have got to where we are without your assistance, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. We'll now take a short break. Okay, welcome back to our next session for today's inquiry into long term sustainability and future of the timber and forest products industry. We now welcome representatives from Housing Industry Association. So starting with uh Mr. Croft, can you state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or affirmation, please?
Good morning, Simon Croft. I'm the Housing Industry Association's Executive Director of Building Policy and Services. And um I swear to the oath or if you're liking to read it out.
Yeah, just read read either the oath or affirmation. I think both have been provided to you.
Sorry, just pulled up. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And Miss the Bird, we'll go to you next.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Joshua Bird, uh, Housing Industry Association Assistant Director for Building in New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, absolute truth, and nothing but the truth.
Excellent. And finally, Mr. Ward.
Thank you. Nicholas Ward, Senior Economist at the Housing Industry Association. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Excellent. Now, would either of the three of you like to make a short opening statement before we go to some questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. I'll I'll make the opening statement. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. The Housing Industry Association is Australia's only national industry association representing the interests of the residential building industry. Our members are involved in delivering more than one hundred and seventy thousand new homes each year through the construction of new housing estates. Detached homes, low and medium density housing, apartment buildings, and completing renovations on Australia's nine million existing homes. The residential building industry also has a wide reach into manufacturing, supply, and retail sectors. As the voice of the residential building industry, H I represents a membership of over six hundred, sixty thousand. Um, building businesses in Australia with over twenty thousand members in New South Wales. H I exists to service the businesses it represents about this inquiry. H I's comments in regards to the inquiry focus on the following key areas for our membership and the residential building industry more broadly. These are: security of the timber supply chain to meet short, medium, and long term demand for future home building. Keeping the supply of timber for home building at a competitive price and not subject to significant market fluctuations. There is appropriate rigor in the timber supply chain for timber used in construction. To ensure that it does not enable substandard or non-conforming products from making onto building sites. The government's continuing to support Australia's forestry, manufacturing, and supply sector. And government's supporting research, development, and removing any unnecessary barriers for further uptake of new and innovative products and materials. Particularly in respect for modular and systems-based construction for multi-residential buildings. While these issues are not specific to the terms of reference of the inquiry, they are technically linked to the purpose and nature of the inquiry. Taking in regard of the current and future construction demand for timber. And the ability of the plantation sector to meet this demand and any constraints in the supply chain. Our priority importance for the residential industry is to security of the timber supply chain to meet future home building demand. While long term housing forecasts are difficult, given the current environment based on population growth projections. An ongoing replacement of aged housing stock is conservatively estimated. That there is demand for the construction of around one hundred and seventy thousand new dwellings per year on average in Australia. It is estimated that between ninety five thousand and one hundred and fifteen thousand of that hundred and seventy is on detached dwellings. And we constructed with around seventy five percent of these expected to use timber framing for that, for the walls and the floors and the structural elements. While there has been growth in the use of alternative framing materials and building systems, these still represent a very small proportion of the market. The housing industry therefore needs to have confidence that this demand of timber framing for houses can be met. Over the past two years, the supply chain and the residential building industry more broadly has experienced a number of challenges. Stemming in part from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Black Summer bushfires. The substantial increases in building activity of new homes and renovations, both in Australia and internationally. Challenges resulting from the COVID nineteen pandemic, global shipping issues, and and Russian-Ukraine conflict. The inquiry therefore provides a timely opportunity to consider potential medium and long term measures that state the federal government would look to implement. To support the forestry industry to meet the future home building demand and the timber supply more broadly. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Croft. Um, has that looked like a pre-prepared statement? Are you happy to email that through to committee secretariat just so they can pass it on to hand side, so we can get it exactly right?
Yeah, no problem.
Excellent. Um, so we've resolved just to do some free flow questions. I might start off and then I'll throw to the rest of the committee members. Um. Is is there anything that's come up during this inquiry? This is obviously our last hearing. Is there anything that's come up? Um, in other submissions or other hearings that you would like to comment on or correct? Um, or raise um from any evidence that you've heard from other hearings first off?
Um, no, no, there's nothing that we've seen that we would um have respect to.
Okay, sure. Can we, can I just go to one issue? It's sort of left the center of of the terms of reference as well. But um, it it goes to obviously the rising cost of timber and and that that impact on your on your members. Um, and 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 builders in general. Um, we know a lot of residential buildings are now sort of done on a fixed pr- fixed. Uh, term tender or fixed price tender. Um, but obviously, you know, when you you set a price twelve months down the line and then you're not building it until. You know, another eight months down the line, there obviously, there's some significant price fluctuations. So can you give us, I've heard anecdotally, that's putting pressure on on local building, small building companies. But can you maybe write a bit of clarity as to the extent that's impacting our our smaller to medium builders?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Chair. So um, probably the simplest way to respond to that one is that, you know, there are a number of contracts that were entered into. Um, you know, around twenty twenty or and that are, that, you know, as you said, have had fixed price contracts. So, you know, the 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 price increases, and I think it's around, I think we saw some quotes recently, the timber. Around a twenty one percent price increase. So those were, those contracts were entered into prior to any of these price increases. So that they are, a lot of people are really struggling on some of those matters and trying to, you know, they are either running at a. Very minimal profit on some of the contracts they've entered into or um just break even. And then some potentially even at a at a at a loss. So it is very challenging um in terms of those price increases. Um, but, you know, the industry is working through them. It is, it is, it is a cycle. Um, but, you know, many of them have lived through over many times um in in terms of their business lives. Um, but yeah, there is some pro- some contracts that they have entered to um prior to, you know, around twenty twenty and the the price increases and those those issues that I mentioned. And that that is placing some pressures on them, but they are working through them to to finish those homes off. And, you know, and it and entering to, you know, that other demand going forward to to ensure that, you know. Factoring in the price, price increases into future contracts.
Okay, are are we looking, just to follow up, are we are we looking at seeing some of these small to medium builders? Uh, I guess fall fall overall because because of that loss that they're making, that they aren't going to be able to recoup? Um, and they're gonna have to shut down? Is that what we're seeing?
Uh, I think they are working through the challenges, Chair, and, you know, and looking to finish those contracts off. Um, some, as I said, that they have gone through, you know, they're framing now, they're probably into those sort of final stages of of pro- of the project. And there is some price increases in some electrical and some of the finishing elements. But they are endeavoring to, you know, finish these projects off so then to implement some new projects going forward. And um, and you know, factoring in those additional additional price increases in into those new projects.
Okay, I'm looking for other, I'll throw to the deputy chair.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, Mick Veach here. I think Mr. Croft might be the person that this question goes to. But uh, the first thing is, so your submission was received by the committee in May twenty twenty one. Uh, there's been a fair bit happened since May twenty twenty one. Um, so in particular, I I wonder if you could take this on notice. But your, the current state of the market section of your submission, uh, we we've drawn upon that for um questioning of other of other witnesses. Um, and the data in there and information contained in there probably needs updating. Is it possible you could just take on notice that section of your submission, the current state of the market, where you look at supply constraints and the like? You know, global demand, uh, and just provide an updated number of statistics for the committee?
I'm sure we'd be able to do something like that, um, Chair, um, so Deputy Chair, um.
Yep.
So the current state of the the market is the the specific part should be asked, yeah.
Yeah, if you could just do that, that would be really handy for the committee. Um, can I also now move to um, uh, in your submission. Um, you speak at length about the appropriate rigor in the timber supply chain for timber used in construction. To ensure that it does not enable substandard and non-conforming products from making its way onto our Australian building sites. Can you, in your submission, you talk about what that is, but can you maybe just elaborate a bit more, I guess, using current information? Uh, what are your concerns there, uh, particularly around the lack of new plantings or re- or plantation?
Yeah, so so this point in terms of that supply chain goes to um the building products um and conformity more more broadly. Um, and that has, that was the subject to a of a federal um Senate inquiry as well, back all the way back in twenty fifteen. Um, and number of the the issues that many of us raised at that time are still really relevant to to today. Um, about trying to ensure about the products that we get in on building sites. And by the time that they get there, to ensure that they meet the relevant codes and standards that they say that they they report to. And then the protection for the builders themselves to ensure that they're using that product. Um, if it was to to fail from actually, you know, saying that it meets the standard, but actually it turns out that it doesn't. But then there's our protections there and for, you know, recourse for them to follow up rather than. It's sort of being a bit back ended the system at the moment, whereas at the people at the end of the supply chain. In terms of the rules and the regulations as opposed to being spread sort of broadly across the supply chain. And those people that have played a big part in that, um, you know, having that accountability. So some sort of shared accountability is sort of where that where that goes to. And ensuring that our conformity levels and our building codes and standards are as rigorous as they can be. Um, to 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 give that confidence to builders, the building certifiers, and the people that are using those products. And if that also about the product information, um, being really clear as well. You know, sometimes it can be very gr- um, broad statements on some of the product information, so meets bushfire requirements. So what level of bushfire is it? Uh, the ballot twelve point five versus ballot Z are very, very different in terms of what their performance levels needs to be. But sometimes that product information can be very difficult to obtain. And not being all that clear from, you know, what aspects of the building codes and standards that um the product reports to meet. So I hope that, I hope that um.
Yep.
That ha- that helps. But there are some improvements that can be made around there. Um, and I know New South Wales have been progressing reforms through the Building Commissioner and and through other other work undertaken. Um, but, you know, there's probably more that can be done in that space about that shared accountability across the supply chain and the ground out codes and standards. And having that really clear information on on products conformity. And having that really clear information on products conformity.
Okay, and thanks. And my last question, Chair, relates to your submission, you make a pretty strong, in my view, a pretty strong comment around supporting research and development. And in particular, you talk about innovation, new innovations in construction systems and materials. They rely on investment in research, obviously. If you had a chance, if you were in my or our seat and you wanted to make a recommendation to the state government around research and development. What would that look like? What's your wish?
Yeah, what's my wish? Probably this goes a little bit, there was also a House of Representatives federal inquiry, the Aussie Jobs Inquiry as well. Recently published a report and one of the nine recommendations in that report also went to this issue. Of the governments, you know, investing in, you know, further research and development. To enable, you know, new products and new systems to come into the market. And also particularly in that multi-residential space, still a fairly small use of timber in that multi-residential space. And we are seeing a lot more work being undertaken on systems based and modular systems of construction. H A is undertaking some work on behalf of the federal government in that regard as well. And we do see that that's sort of going to have a lot more uptake in the years to come as well, you know, utilizing. Timber framing as part of those systems and using our common systems of construction. So I think investing in that research and development is ongoing and the R and D is probably. Something in Australia that we probably don't do enough of is that R and D and research and development. And investing in sort of that future. To put a number on it is a difficult one, isn't it, on these things, you know? Is it two million dollars to do a project? Is it ten million dollars? It's very hard to put a number on it, but, you know, looking at. Grant programs and things like this where people can put submissions towards future opportunities around it is probably something the governments could look at. In that sort of grant application type of approach in the R and D area.
Do regulations and codes, do they put impediments in front of the use of new innovative materials?
It can, yeah, because they are traditionally written for building it stick by stick, traditional construction. Where our building codes and standards are performance based, so they do allow for innovative systems. But the innovative systems are then subject to approval on a case by case situation. So people will look for that more prescription so that they can bring new products and systems to market. And have the confidence that it will be approved at the end of the supply chain for its, you know, use in construction. So the codes and standards are slow to innovate. And sort of requires many years of people using the systems before they then get adopted into the codes and standards. But it does then also go to your other question on the research. Because usually the changes to the codes and standards come from industry and also that R and D and research. So. That's why probably there is some scope to get ahead of the game rather than being reactive in some of the approaches. To enabling these new systems and forms of construction into the market.
Thank you.
Chair, can I just follow up just on one point that was raised by Mr Veach? And that's the issue of the possibility of substandard and non-conforming timber going into the building supply system. Can you, could you please take on notice what, if any, recommendations you believe this committee should make? To the New South Wales government if we wish to have a more rigorous system in place to ensure that that doesn't happen? You spoke to it in response to Mr Veach's question. You said that there may be more that can be done. If you could just take on notice. Please, what else you believe may be something that could be done to ensure this doesn't get more into the. Into the building supply chain?
Thanks.
Just dotting it down what I'm taking on notice today.
I'm sure the committee secretary will be in touch as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I'll just write to Mr Barrett now.
I've got questions about the same topics and I maybe chronologically should have jumped in before those ones, but the seventy five percent of timber that we're using. I guess, why, like I know you touched on the research and possibility of doing something different, but why are we at seventy five percent still? Is it price? Is it availability? And what are the trends on those different, the difference materials?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit to it. I might throw to my colleague Nicholas Ward. We did do a research program. About two or three years ago, whether those figures come from. But it's those two things you just mentioned there in terms of price, there's also. Readily available generally has been historically, you know, workability of timber. I'm a carpenter by trade myself many years ago. You know, timber you can manufacture on site, you can, you know, do your checkout and things like this where using steel. Is more a fabricated system where, you know, you can tailor it to suit the side itself, workable and, you know. And as you said, traditionally been available at a competitive price and readily available. So all of the above, you know, shipping, moving timber comes, you know, in standard sizes that suit what we build as well. Whether, you know, stud sizes that then shoot two point four meters for a stud. Then will also then reflective of what our plasterboard sheets are and things like this. So, you know, fixing later on, you know, in terms of fixing your plasterboard. Fixing your skirting and your architraves, you know, has our standard tools and nails and screws all set up around it. You know, there has been, as I said, there has been some movement in that, particularly in the last sort of eighteen to twenty four months. Where supply has been more difficult that we have seen, you know, probably steel, I think we did it. It's like it was in the report, I think we mentioned fifteen percent or fourteen percent. I think some figures show that it's probably around twenty percent at the moment. And, you know, there are some other places like Western Australia that still uses a lot of cavity measuring double brick. So that's, you know, that's probably, there's a range of factors around it all. But yeah, it's a traditional material that's been used for many, many years and readily available at a good price and good workability and transport. I don't know if Nicholas, you want to add anything else to those comments?
Still on mute, mate?
Thank you. Look, I would just probably add, I think the question is a very good question. You know, it goes to how builders handle and adapt to their changing situations. I guess, I think, you know, we sort of probably need to let the dust settle on the. Kind of current conditions to see what the net result is. And I'd probably just add one piece of data that's relevant. So Simon referred to. General timber cost going up by about twenty percent in the A S data. Within that, structural timber has gone up by about forty percent. But steel products have also gone up by about forty percent. So. I suppose the impetus to switch is. Less compelling when you realise that kind of everything's going up. And I guess. You know, the figure that you referred to, seventy five percent, is from a couple of years ago and. I think when we get to the end of the term. Period, then we'll have a clear idea about exactly how sort of substitution plays out.
Can I ask a follow up on that, Scotty, if that's right? If we're, you know, obviously you would have preferred more pine trees to be planted thirty years ago, so they're, you know, being harvested now, but. Fires are impacting and we didn't do that, right? So what do we do now? Just say we've got two hundred million dollars to spend. Should we buy more land and plant more pine or should we put it into R and D? Because by the time those pine trees are mature. There'll be a new technology with a different material that will be your preferred building product anyway. Give us a sense of, you know, what we should do with government resources to guarantee the building industry has what it needs in the future. And that we're not sort of trying to basically recreate. Old ways of doing things that aren't going to actually be the way it's done in thirty years' time when those trees are fully mature.
I probably can try and answer this one. This seems like a broader question, but. I think I'd probably refer to the House of Representatives inquiry, the Aussie Jobs looked at, I think they brought four, nine recommendations. And it went to, you know, each of the different issues that I think that interlinked, you know, all of them work together. And I think that maybe having regard for some of those recommendations may be worthwhile for this inquiry as well, but it went to, you know. A concessional loan scheme for the establishment of new timber plantations. You know, the carbon abatement work as well there. Projects, the research and development as well as the development of co-conduct and other things. But in terms of, you know, are we going to move away and build the things differently? You know, what we see is that we have built timber framing for a long time, we've adapted, maybe I used lots more prefabricated wall systems and roof systems. We're still utilizing the same types of timber and as we might move to more systems based construction. You know, it'll still be utilizing our specific types of materials and techniques, but tweaked to maybe doing a little bit more offsite and doing as much onsite. So I think that still, that all these things go hand in hand with each other. And, you know, even like types of different engineered timbers and floor trusses. They are still using majority of the same types of timber, but using different ways. So I think they go hand in hand with each other.
And so also back to another point that Mr Veach raised about the sub quality standard. You're touching in your report about a particular issue for internationally sourced product. To what extent are you worried that as we're short of timber, an increase in imports of timber? Will lead to an increase of substandard timber in the supply chain?
I think probably along that point, our point was more a general point about materials broadly. About, you know, ensuring that our supply chain and our building system and regulatory system is robust. That was sort of the point we were making and where you might. I think in terms of where we might have seen substandard timber is probably much lower than some of the other types of materials. Sometimes you might see reports around glass and some of some steel and. Rather than, we don't generally see as much with timber as a more natural product. Some of the engineered timbers, you know, there has been some issues in the past with the glues and things like this used in some of the. Some of the, you know, the formwork ply and things like this. So the point was more a broader general point about ensuring that we have a robust system in place. We have a very good system administrator at the moment, so we have very small instances of non-conforming product. But we want to ensure that, you know, that we do have that system if there are some improvements that could be made to it. And that's probably where our point was going to, but I wouldn't, you know, want it to be that, you know, we're seeing a lot of. You know, non-conforming timber happening on sites, that's not the case, you know. Instances of non-conforming products are small, but, you know, there have generally been other areas also that necessarily timber.
I could ask another one about the use of timber in the structure. Ultimately, whose decision is that? Is it the builder or is it the homeowner?
It would generally be the builder and the design and, you know, if it's depending on. On the house size and the house complexity and the type, it may need to have some engineering. And engineers design going to it, which in many buildings now with the large open plan footprints. So there might be then a combination of steel and timber used to break up the different structural elements to, you know, get the spans that you can buy and are available. So, you know, it's generally going to come down to then, you know, if the homeowner asks, I want to have my house in steel framing. Then the builder would build it with steel framing, but generally that's, you know, just done in the plans and the specifications and then if there is engineering. And framing schedules that go into it, which are many have, most times would have that. You know, then that will determine some of the sizing. We have span tables in our Australian standards and things like this for the types of timber, the grading. You know, what sort of size members that you can use.
So there doesn't seem to be a big push away from using timber products from consumers?
No, there is, as I said, the steel was, you know, report was probably around that fourteen, fourteen and a half percent. Now sort of moved around that twenty percent, but, you know, if the homeowner requested it, if they requested bricks, if they requested brand earth, if they requested. You know, a structural insulated panel system, then the builder could build out of any of those things. Provided it, you know, still meets building codes and has all different spans and things like that that it needs to meet.
Thank you.
We've got about three minutes, so I'll throw to Mr Field.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question about hardwood use in, I guess, the residential construction sector. How much is structural pine, L V L, those sorts of materials replacing the use of native hardwood timbers?
Obviously, it would be more anecdotal my response to that one. Sorry, but, you know, I grew up in Melbourne building, you know, houses and. We did use a fair bit of hardwood F seventeen for our structural applications for our lit tools and for our. Floor joists and things like this. Building up in Canberra, very rarely do you see hardwood use, you know, they generally are using L V Ls. Or using, similarly in New South Wales, you know, engineered timbers. And the different types of engineered timbers, which is quite a few different types. So, and softwood sort of beams as well. So I think it probably would differ a little bit across the country in where the, you know. But certainly I think it's less and less of hardwood used and more of. Some solid pine softwoods, but a lot of engineered timbers being utilized for the structural applications. Though if it's to the earlier point about the different types of spans and openings for dwellings as well. And, you know, the engineered timbers can do a lot in that respect and the availability of longer lengths and longer spans.
So a transition, and we're seeing this obviously in WA and Victoria and possibly at some stage in New South Wales, transition away from native forest logging. Wouldn't necessarily have an impact on housing construction?
I probably would have to leave that for others who have got more sort of around the hardwood sort of perspective around that, but. You know, in terms of, we have timber codes and standards and framing that gives us different solutions to different types of members, if it's softwood, hardwood, if it's. Engineered timbers, you know, so probably more I'd probably talk to that one and let others who are more on the. Understands sort of complexities of the hardwood softwood conversation to respond to that one.
One very quick then, just say you do have a big span. You want to put in a big presentation window, you know, three metres and you can put a hardwood beam up to support the roof or a. L V L or engineered pine product up there, which is cheaper?
I think it could be a little bit too, where you might be in the country, in terms of, I think if I tried to buy a hardwood one. Around Queen Beean area, around that area, I think, you know, you'd get a better price for a. For a solid or an L V L than you would for hardwood. But maybe in other parts of the country where it's more readily, the price might be fairly comparable. So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us right to time. So thank you, gentlemen, for coming and giving us some insight. From your part of the world. I think you have taken a few questions on notice. The committee secretary will be in touch. With what those are and you'll have twenty one days to get back to us. But once again, thank you for coming in and giving evidence. Excellent. Okay, welcome back to our next session. We now have witnesses from board manufacturing. As well as the Frame and Trust Manufacturers Association of Australia. Starting with you, Mrs Nelson, would you state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation?
Sure. My name is William James Nelson. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Board Manufacturing. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm. That the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Mr Drysdale?
My name is Warwick Drysdale. I'm here representing the Frame and Trust Manufacturers Association of Australia. I am a member and sponsor of that organisation. Apart from that, I also am Director of Programmed Timber Supplies, which is a timber processing and fibre utilisation plant based here in Western Sydney. I'll be taking the oath, thanks. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. Now, would you either like to make a short opening statement before we?
Yeah, I've got one, Chair, if that's okay. Right, go.
Yep.
Look, and good to see you again and thanks for the opportunity to speak today. This is a very high level sort of overview, if I may, from our perspective. I'm certainly very proud of my sort of lifetime career I've had in this dynamic and vital sector. It's a sector that employs. dynamic and vital sector. It's a sector that employs eighty thousand people directly and many hundreds of thousands of people indirectly and contributes about eighty-four billion dollars to the national economy. Forest products are at the heart of every Australian home, from from the frame to the flooring, to the veranda, to the veneering, and from joinery to joists. It's a significant sector, a sector in my mind that has struggled to receive the credit it deserves in many ways underrated and quite achiever, taken for granted if you like. The forest product sector delivers many short and long-term environmental and socio-economic benefits. It's sustainable and it's aligned to the principles of the circular economy. It's renewable, it's recyclable, as evidenced by uh Borg Manufacturing's newly initiated redirect recycling program. It's a carbon sink in the climate change discussion. It's regionally based, creating thousands of regional employment opportunities. In fact, it is labour hungry and it is an issue that we are constantly dealing with, trying to get more people to work in our in our business. And in saying that, it's uh it's much more than the blue collar worker that um people think of as our industry because it provides the full spectrum of careers from finance right through to forestry. And of course, as I mentioned before, it makes a significant contribution to the national G D P. But a successful forest product sector needs vision. It needs thirty, sixty, ninety, a hundred year plus vision. It needs a commitment to the long term, not only because of the harvest cycles of poisonous radiata, but also to support the private sector investment in world-class wood fibre processing sector. Government policy in this space needs to be bipartisan and it needs to transcend government terms. A bigger Australia, a population of thirty or thirty-five or forty million people or more needs a bigger, stronger, self-sufficient forest product sector to supply the products needed to support that growth. Furthermore, the industry needs to have the confidence to invest. In low-return, high-capital-cost processing technology, world-class technology in fact, technology that enables highly efficient production to meet not only Australia's growing consumption needs, but also to establish a viable and competitive wood products export industry. It's something that we often don't talk about too much. In this country and in New South Wales, we have the space and the resources, the climate and the capability to build a globally competitive forest products industry sector. New South Wales government and governments from around Australia need to get behind this opportunity. And in doing so, we need to address some of the future challenges of the sector. Um, the likes of climate change and the impact that that may have on on fire, skills development and training, energy costs, and again, um you would have noted during your visit to Oberon, the ten megawatt installation of solar power on the facility, uh on the Borg Manufacturing facility at Oberon. Uh, we need to address biosecurity. And uh overall, we need to ensure the government regulation as it relates to health and safety, freight and logistics provides the opportunity for the sector to prosper uh going forward. But overall, we need a bigger, stronger, more efficient forest product sector to support a growing Australian economy and population. In short, and in really very short terms, uh we need more trees planted and more investment in the processing sector. Thank you.
Mr. Drysdale, did you have a?
Uh, yes, I have a uh a opening statement, uh which I was pretty prepared. Uh, the F T M A is a national association that supports timber prefabricated roof truss and wall frame frame fabricators. And it is these fabricators that provide the skeletal structure of by far the greatest majority of the attached domestic dwellings and a growing percentage of low and mid-rise shelter for Australians. In short, it is the frame and truss industry that is an early part of a significant downstream forest and wood products value chain. If the frames and trusses are not produced, the ramification is that the basic need for shelter is not able to be achieved to house Australians. And I apologize for coming at this from the negative, but it is what it is. Furthermore, the continuation of the value chain would not progress and that would have a massive impact on the economy. As the plantation estate has not expanded, any future growth will need to come from either imports or through better utilization of domestic resources. To meet current demand, Australia imports over twenty percent of the timber required. With the with the progressive reduction in product available from our own native forest resource, some additional reliance has been placed on import dependency. By far, the greatest percentage of timber used in frames and trusses is presently, but not necessarily, from a softwood resource. The frame and truss industry is very appreciative of support supplementation, import supplementation. As as without it, it would not be able to meet the demand for shelter for our citizens. But however, there are there is a risk in relying on imports entirely to meet an increasing demand for shelter. Global demand for timber and forest products is increasing as the rest of the world understands the critical and unique contribution, the ultimate renewable contributes in C O two sequestration. There is a growing timber and forest product per capita globally. Ability to reach net zero by twenty fifty is a significant driver of this. There is conceivably, and if not actually, pressure on exporting countries to retain more of their wood domestically so they can reach their own targets. Geopolitical events like that playing out in the Ukraine at the moment exacerbate the supply-demand equation. And that's not to the benefit of securing our requirement for increased dependency. The current in the the current supplementation by imports to meet our domestic needs come overwhelmingly from managed native forests, not plantations as we know them. We are not supplementing the shortfall from our plantations from like offshore plantations. It is the strong offshore native forest management that is supporting our deficit. Forest area per capita in the great majority of countries that we import from is dramatically less than Australia's. So conclusions on that base can be easily drawn on the relative approach to forestry in this in this country. Uh, the demand for shelter is increasing. Housing Industry Association Master Builders' analysis proves the obvious. Already rely on strong support from importers to meet that need. We are indebted for their support. We must do everything to ensure we are meeting our own needs as much as possible. Clearly, we need more trees on the ground. One billion would be just the start. In the meantime, all sustainable opportunities for increased domestic supply must be taken. Fortunately, there are opportunities without environmental cost and utilizing our plantation resources is the first area of concentration. Softwood grown in the regions that don't have processing capacity must uh must be transported to processing centres and not driven to the port. Some reduction is in, some some redirection is occurring now uh to support softwood sawmill supply following the nineteen twenty-fives, but there is potential for more. The increasing value of the resource is changing some of the fundamental economics around what is a sawlog and what is a pulp log. The difficulties in processing lower quality logs is being overtaken by increasing fibre value and improving technical ability to handle these logs. Extraction of more building suitable products from the current processed log is possible through technological improvement and our country Programme Timber Supplies is a classic example of that opportunity. Structural design software has has further scope to also allow better fibre utilization. And hardwood plantation that was planted for pulp production has the potential to be converted in some degree into building products. All of these initiatives are of considerable interest to an industry that prepares the ground for massive value-adding downstream, which provides the shelter needs of the country and into the future. We appreciate and are dependent on contributions from offshore native forests, but improving our own sovereign control facilitates the economic and social governance obligations that are critical. These opportunities will require investments, private, government combined. But by providing the skeletons for our entire downstream value chain, the returns are beyond significant and provide shelter for our children and theirs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drysdale. Did you, are you happy to pass it off to the committee secretary?
Thank you. Um, I just firstly, on behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank uh you, Jim, for taking us into Borg Manufacturing and showing us the the fantastic facility you've got there. Um, I thought I'd probably just invite you. It might be hard to condense an hour or so of a tour into a a three-minute explanation, but I thought some of the great work that you're doing there um and innovation that you're doing there, I think, needs to be put on the official record. So perhaps if you could talk to us about the the redirect recycling element, I think I think that was probably a key part of it. And also maybe the, yeah, the I guess the power thing, the, you know, the solar panels and all that, if you could.
Yeah, as much as you can with that.
As much as you can. Yeah, I I think we I think we went up well overdue on the on the visit, but um so uh, you know, four hours into uh three minutes, okay, I'll I'll do my best.
Yeah.
Um. In short, uh we are we are a um a fibre processing facility and we uh we produce a medium-density fibre board and particle board. It was a facility that was established in the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties and acquired by um Borg Manufacturing, John and Michael Borg, to um full Australian, uh Australian guys, brothers in two thousand and ten. And since since that time, they've invested hundreds of millions of dollars in that facility to make that facility a world-class. And I mean world-class, leading-edge technology facility. It is, uh, we have state-of-the-art equipment to make uh particle board and M D F. Uh, we are producing in that facility alone about forty percent of Australia's particle board needs in that one facility. Um, and with our facilities, our older facilities in Mount Gambier, we're producing sixty percent of Australia's particle board needs, um raw particle board needs um from those two facilities. And we are producing about forty percent of Australia's raw M D F out of that facility at Oberon as well. So the facility now employs, uh, we have about uh three hundred and thirty people at Oberon alone. We employ sixteen hundred and sixty people in New South Wales. Um, and the investments that you saw at Oberon, um we have uh s- made similar investments in our downstream value-add processing. So we take that raw M D F and raw particle board and continue to value-add that product right through to uh cut and routed kitchen doors that go into every household around the country. Uh, we make wardrobes, we make uh wardrobe uh components, we make bench tops. Uh, we make decorative panels, a lot of the the product that is around us in this room, in fact. So from raw product, uh right back to the forest. In fact, we we own some land and we own some forests and we also buy from Forest Corporation. We make particle board and M D F in the facility. We value add it in other facilities. We have that Summersby and Charmhaven. And we, that goes into the marketplace. In more recent times, we've uh established a business called Redirect Recycling uh where our commitment to the circular economy is best exemplified by this uh redirect recycling business where we have um we have a series of uh bins that we place out into the marketplace, both with frame and truss manufacturers, but also with our customers. And we take the fibre offcuts from frame and truss companies and from uh particle board uh offcuts from our customers. And rather than that product going to landfill, we collect that product and we bring that back to Oberon. We reprocess that product, decontaminate it of any contaminants in there, break it down again, flake it and then make particle board out of it again. So whilst we are processing about seven hundred thousand tonnes of wood fibre into the Oberon facility, we are currently only producing, um collecting about seventy thousand tonnes of product from New South Wales that is going back into that facility. Having said that, it is very early stages of that program and the members of the committee saw that program when they visited Oberon. Um, our intention is to expand that facility and at least double that quantity of fibre that we're bringing in to produce new product from. And the last thing around our sort of commitment to uh modern globally competitive manufacturing is not only that committed to circular economy, but at the facility at Oberon, we have installed Australia's largest rooftop installation uh of solar panels. It's a ten-megawatt facility on the roof of uh the Oberon plant. And we have uh quite a complex uh water recycling program as well to ensure that we're collecting water from the site and the fibre that we bring in, cleaning it and reusing it in the facility.
Thank you. Um, I might just ask a couple of questions and I'll throw to others. I mean, both of you have spoken about this gap between what we produce domestically and and what we need to import. And you both sort of indicated we need to perhaps probably close that gap a little bit. I think you, Mr. Drysdale, spoke about other countries being a little bit more protectionist about their own domestic supply. Do do you think we need to go to that, those steps about being a little bit more protectionist uh in terms of holding back some of our uh our exports?
Uh, thank you for the question, Chair. I think that would, Australia is in a very difficult, a very different situation, obviously, because we are importing from exporters. But we are the recipient of the import. So in our sector, there's, we're not exporting uh product that we we would be involved in in the frame and trust sector, of course. But um when we look at some of the residues that may get exported or chipped and things like that, uh, there's potential, I think, areas that some of that product could be uh processed into other products for to meet our our needs domestically. And that would therefore take demand off some of the imports, which, as I've said in the opening presentation, is that they will come under. Other countries are coming under pressure. Um, populations are increasing, increasing. Um, forest areas are not increasing so much generally across the world, but in certainly the countries that we are receiving product from, their ratio is actually currently increasing population to forest area. So there's a bit of a situation there that, you know, we've we've got a bit of supply coming through. But if you look at what we are short and where the projections are going, you know, with the, I think, the master builders, I think, talking about two hundred and fifty thousand house frames short by twenty thirty-five. We're seriously going to have to look to other options, just rather than just imports.
Yeah, and and I guess obviously, I think we've all heard this and we've spoken about it. Cleaning plantations now isn't necessarily going to address the the problem that we're facing. So what what can we do at a micro level um now, you know, that will might maybe not completely solve the problem we face in twenty twenty fifty, but, you know, make it or alleviate.
There there are still, there are still, you know, I haven't got the the numbers right in front of me, Warwick may may have them, but there are still, you know, thousands of tonnes of logs being exported out of this country. Right? Now, some of them pulp logs, some of them are sawlogs, it's probably less sawlogs now. But then isn't, nothing frustrates me more than seeing um logs um leave this country, um be processed into finished products and sold back into this country. When I see, you know, clearly there's an opportunity to process that fibre domestically by Australian workers in Australian companies to support the Australian industry. And I'm particularly talking about, you know, the the panels industry in particular, uh where we we consume pulp log in particular.
Chair, can can I still follow up on on that first?
Yeah, I just.
And Mr. Drysdale might follow up too. I mean, I went and had a look after we um spoke to you. I think it's twenty thousand tonnes every six to eight weeks, so maybe two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand tonnes of pulp log. Um, soft softwood pulp log going out of Eden. When that was announced, it's post fires, when that was announced by Forestry Corporation, they said that it doesn't meet the domestic sawmill specs, obviously pulp mill and pulp logs. Um, and it's surplus to needs for pulp mill requirements. So is the issue there the transport?
Pulp mill, yeah, that may be to pulp mill, but not to for the wood processing.
That, right?
Yeah.
You you and it would make sense for you to turn the trucks down and pick it up and take it to your plant.
Part of the, part of the challenge is the cost of freight. So getting getting product, getting the logs from Eden to or Bombala to to Oberon is an expensive exercise. So that therein lies a challenge, but you can overcome those challenges, right? That's that's a challenge that we've just got to face. But the reality is, we are, we are short of fibre in New South Wales if we take the position that we've taken, which is to continue to. If we take the position that we've taken, which is to continue to invest in that Oberon facility. And, and I know that it's outside the scope of this, of this inquiry, but into the South Australian facility as well. Our object, our, our intention is to invest in South Australia and invest in New South Wales and build. More processing facilities in this country to support the things that Warwick and I are talking about, a bigger Australia. Right? And at the end of the day, even in the short term, turning some of those logs around, they. You saw the new uh, MDF line that we've, uh, we're installing at Oberon, right? Only yesterday, uh, only yesterday, I was sitting, um. Uh, in a meeting at the, at the office and we were talking about the constraints that we had with fibre supply to support. The investment in that, in that MDF facility, that, that new MDF line that we're just installing.
Sorry, Mr. Drysdale.
I beg pardon.
Yeah, that's, um, I think when we're looking at what's happening with export of logs, and now there is a changing, it's a changing environment. Because obviously technology is improving the whole time and our ability to handle smaller logs and more difficult logs is, is, um. Is improving on a technical basis, but also on the actual cost, the economics. You know, where it wasn't worth taking that log to a sawmill in the past, well, maybe there is. And I think it's an integrated approach that we look at it because. There's been a demand for structural timber products, obviously, going back for a long time, but. It's fallen to a fairly sort of narrow area of, of, of need. And I think if we move forward and we do this particularly in our own businesses, we will now go and look and chase value. And, and products that would not necessarily have made a building component in the past. Yeah, there's plenty of, you know, wood fibre characteristics which can be utilised, which currently aren't being utilised. And a lot of it's because the technology hasn't been available in the past. And I think as we move a bit forward, we will see better recoveries, we will see better yields, better, better yields, better grade recoveries from that resource. And that therefore means that you can start to use maybe a log which, you know, may not have gone to the sawmill in the past. But I mean, you know, it depends where the price goes. I mean, if you look at relative values of timber products and there has been. You know, it was mentioned earlier, forty percent increase and that's, and that's about right. Um, product that we look at in our particular, in our business, not with the, our my frame and. Trust manufacturers cap on, but my own personal business, is that the cost of that lower grade fibre that we take in is increasing faster than higher grade. Product, you know, it's like, you know, there's no more cheap cuts of meat type, you know, thing. Everything is starting to get utilised better and better and that's, that's only a good thing. And we just need to keep on that track and pursue it further. And there are still the further opportunities that we can expect. More value, more volume out of our current resources that we have here.
Chair, maybe just?
Oh, I'm.
Yeah, if you're, if you're okay with it. I mean, what immediately occurs to me is perhaps that's a long term contract down at Eden, that export contract. I mean, would you be supporting to us recommending that forestry corporation review any of their export contracts? And if there's a, a beneficial domestic need, looking at, you know, redirecting that resource.
I think, I think, uh, the straight economics are gonna take over that anyhow. I mean, you know, if you look, you know, people who are exporting logs, obviously exporting it and making money, but if they're gonna keep the log here and get, get better money for it. It's a bit of a, you know, pretty simple equation, you're gonna keep it here. And I know, for instance, you know, down at Eden, you know, they are looking to put in. Additional processing capacity down there and for, for our business, which has an inflow straight into the Frame and Trust market, that's really exciting. That's seriously exciting because that is bringing back into our domestic economy. And adding value all the way down the, the, the value stream on wood fibre that otherwise would have left this country. In a raw form, I think it's very exciting.
Okay, I'll throw to the deputy chair.
Thanks. Mrs. Nelson, when we were at your Oberon facility.
Hmm.
You spoke, highlighted the committee and most of us actually travel on the road, but there's an issue, a productivity constraint essentially in and out of Oberon.
Hmm.
Um, and uh, there's a proposal from the community uh, around how to fix that productivity constraint, that, that roadway. I, I would really appreciate if you could put on the record, full record for us, just one, what is the issue and what is the community's proposal to address that issue?
And, and you tre- you travelled one of the roads anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, to get there.
And the other one to go back.
Yeah, yeah, went by Tarrana, but anyway, but the, uh, yeah, the road is, um. The road in and out of Oberon is, um, is a narrow road. Um, it's, um, it's got a number of bridges on it, but one bridge in particular, um. Is, uh, is, has got, um, some weight constraints. So the, the amount of uh, trucks going in and out there is one. There's some safety issues around the number of trucks that are moving in and out of, uh, of Oberon, not only our trucks. But, um, the trucks that support the Highland Pine Products plant and also the Australian native landscapes plant. So there's a safety issue there, there's a wildlife issue there, there's a weight limitation on that road. Um, which, um, um, has been looked at a number of times and has been partially addressed. And the, there is, um, there is some work being done at the moment around, um. The potential of some feasibility around rail links in and out of, out of Oberon as well, which are in the very early stages.
And so the number of truck movements in both directions, what was?
Yeah, I, I haven't got those numbers off the top of my head.
I think when we were discussing it, it was something like, I think.
There's at least a hundred trucks loaded at Oberon, like between, depending on the day, seventy to a hundred trucks loaded. Uh, at our Oberon facility, let alone what's coming in and out of Highland Pine.
Yeah, the other, and the other facility mentioned their numbers as well. It's sort of, I think, remember we put it in the vicinity of about a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
To two hundred truck movements in one direction.
Yeah, no, it's crazy.
And those trucks also come back the other way. So if you think about that, on that road becomes an issue. And the rail leakage. Thanks. Can I, the other thing I would like to raise, um, if I could, is the, uh, the issue of research and development. Um, some of the work at, at the, your facility in Oberon, Mr. Nelson, was just quite mind boggling. Like, I, I'm quite appreciative of the effort that your company's putting into, uh, developing new ways of processing, for example. Um, do you think that there is sufficient money put into research and development in this space, uh, in New South Wales? Uh, and, you know, you're sitting before the committee members on our final sitting day, hearing day. Uh, if you were to make a recommendation to government around that, what would it look like?
Yeah, I, I think it goes to my o- opening, opening statement, deputy chair, that the. I think the, I think the processing sector in particular, um. Needs to have the confidence to invest and, uh, throughout my career. Uh, I've worked through a, a number of, um, a number of companies and public companies. And the concern in the larger public companies is the payback, uh, analysis and the payback periods. And that come with those substantial investments. So, you know, that, um, that, that new particle board line that you walk down alongside. You know, that was over a hundred billion dollars investment and the, the returns on the particle board product are quite low. So you need to have long term horizons if you're investing in that sort of technology. And to have long term horizons, you need confidence in your supply of wood fibre to support. That investment in the processing technology, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So, so there's, there's a basic sort of economic principle there that you, you need to sort of climb over. The R and D, what, the R and D then comes from the, the, the company, the investing company. To look for that best technology around the world. And, and I'm not. Look, I, I don't think it's necessary, the, you know, responsibility of government to do that R and D. There may be R and D incentives that come with that, but as a, as, as the chief executive of Borg Manufacturing. I'd say that we, we're masters of our own destiny when it comes to investing in the R and D. And, and I think it's, it's, it's better to come from the private sector, Warwick may have a, a different view on it. But the, the likes of, uh, in South Australia, there's a, um, a CLT plant that's just recently been built. There's, there's been other CLT plants, uh, um, being built in the country. Trying to come up with innovative new wood based products, engineered wood products to substitute in for concrete and steel. And they're largely coming from the private sector. So I, you know, I don't want to pass the responsibility to government.
But government could incentivise.
Oh, if, if the government could incentivise to do it and if the government can provide the environment where you've got long term. Confidence to invest in that technology, then we will, we will run with it.
Yeah.
Mr. Drysdale. I think, um, you know, obviously, our, you know, our operations are a lot smaller. But I mean, you know, we made a couple of million dollar investment, my wife and I, a couple of years ago. And we're only running, we still have probably around about forty percent capacity available. And, you know, you make those decisions, you know, ahead of time, looking at what resource you do have available. It doesn't matter who you are, you do need to look at what the long term synopsis is. But the thing that I think would be very important for a lot of people is to maybe reassess what happens with a grant scheme. Because I think as Jim says, the private sector is, they've got to put their hand in their pocket. I mean, they're gonna, you know. We already have skin in the game in a fairly serious way. It'd be nice to think that somebody at some point can come along and give us a bit of, a bit of a hug or a pat on the back and say, well. We understand you guys are actually trying to achieve something here, can we assist you? And I think that's, you know, we've applied for grants in the past and, you know, I think, you know, probably Jim has a whole department that probably applies for grants. But when you're a small business, um, you know, these things can become more complicated, more difficult what they are. And, and innovation doesn't necessarily come from big business, innovation tends to come a lot of the time from small business. But I think any encouragement of that, that would be very, very important. And members of the FTMA, I mean, you know, they're investing more and more in technology now to improve their efficiencies and outputs. And I'm sure, you know, all the members of FTMA would appreciate the understanding that there's, there's government support and understanding of what they are actually trying to achieve. And not make the process too administrative difficult.
Yes, thanks. Uh, thank you, obviously.
Yeah, Chair, just one follow up on that if I, if I could. You know, obviously, um, you both alluded to it, but we're talking about access to fibre here. The big uncertainty is enough supply. And you were clear with us, uh, Mr. Nelson out there. Mr. Drysdale, you'll have an opinion on this. So I just wanna go to that question of, you know, what investment is needed? In state owned plantations going forward. Um, we were out there, um. It, it was pretty clear that Forestry Corporation either weren't prepared to make the investment, it was too expensive for new land. Um, but you indicated to us that you're making some of those investments in new plantations, wondering how you can do it when they can't. Or maybe it's just a, a matter of, there is no, there's no too, there's not too high a price to pay for land to do this because we need the resource. Because that material is ultimately going to be needed for, um, our, our, our economy, for businesses behind us or whatever it is. So I'm just trying to understand how we go about making recommendations around the future of the softwood plantations. Um, and I, I asked the question of the previous, um, witnesses which you heard, takes thirty years to grow these trees. If you wanna increase supply of, of, of Pinus radiata across New South Wales, by the time they've grown to maturity. Is the sector gonna have moved on and found new products or are we gonna need to make that investment no matter the cost?
I think that what will happen in time is that we, like in, in your business and technology is getting better. And we get more efficient and, and, and more capable of extracting the value that, that's hidden in all the products. And especially some of the plantation product we have. So in thirty years' time, it's gonna have a completely different value as to what we are looking to plant now. Um, you know, the problem is you've gotta put up a lot of money upfront and have that city there for that time. So things like carbon farming initiatives and things like that, and looking at carbon price that can give growers some return. Throughout the process is probably, you know, very worth considering.
Do you think the private sector can play a bigger role in plantations than they currently are in that way? Or you think?
Uh, potentially, and I think if you look at, and I'm not an expert in this area and I'm sort of sitting outside of, you know, my area of, you know, any serious knowledge. But you do look at, uh, companies who are utilizing wood fibre for purposes other than timber. Uh, are able to probably look at some of these things a, a bit more closely than what's happening with timber. Because, you know, there's some, there's some uncertainty. You look at timber prices globally, they're very volatile. I mean, you know, there's an index, you know, they trade futures on the Chicago Merc, Mercantile Exchange. Prices two years ago was, and it's, doesn't, it doesn't mean much because it's in a million board feet in US dollars, which, but the, the, the scale is the interesting thing. You know, it was pre- trading around about four fifty dollars. Things went mad, went up to sixteen hundred dollars, plummeted back to five hundred, back up to fourteen hundred. And now I looked at it this morning and it's back down to, um, about six hundred, six hundred dollars. So there's a massive volatility and that's in, I mean, obviously it's been an extreme situation through Covid and, uh. And things just recently, but global wood price is a lot more volatile than what we've seen in our local market. Um, if we saw the same volatility here, that would probably make some of those investment decisions even more difficult.
Well, Mrs. Nelson, you're making those financial decisions as a company, so what would your recommendation be for this committee around what we should be advising government?
Yeah, no, look, I, I, I think it is a challenge. I think there's, uh, I think the economics still need to stand up, right? So, and the, the issue with. You know, the issue with land prices at the moment has, um, made that much more challenging, you know, the. Covid and the regionalisation of a lot of the residents of Sydney. And, uh, the biggest cities moving out to the country, particularly if you go out to Oberon. Now, as, as you know, it's a two and a half, two and three quarter hour trip out there and from Sydney and people are buying up land and. Yeah, land prices are higher, so it's, yes, we are doing it, but, but clearly, you know, that's. It's dictated by the economics at the time, you still, it's still gotta be feasible. Um, I, I still, you know, and maybe it's naive to say it, but I, I still, I still think we need vision here. I think we need a really long term horizon to think about. You know, what, what New South Wales, what Australia will need in the next thirty, sixty or ninety years. And I think, I think timber, I think wood has, uh, an important role to play. In housing Australians well into the future, not only just housing Australians, but providing the joinery and the. All the flooring products and everything else that I mentioned before. And I think government needs to think about, as your predecessors did. Uh, a hundred or so years ago, about making that investment in forestry, um, for the long term. Because I do think, and Warwick just touched on it a moment ago, I think that what you will find is that. Wood, uh, will continue to find, it will, we will find ways to. Continue to, to use that product efficiently and effectively well into the future. It's been around for millions of years. People have been using wood for a long, long time and they're gonna be using it for a long time into the future. Whether it's private, private sector, they will continue to invest and do some research and development. And find ways to use that product effectively. The great thing about those logs and those, those Pinus radiata trees, and again, as you saw when you visited Oberon. Every scerrick of that tree is used. And the stuff that's left in the forest, the biomass that's left in the forest, and I think you went out and went out to the forestry area. Is used as fertilizer for the soil health anyway. And there's probably some product out of that biomass that we could still try and recover. It hasn't been cost effectively in the past, but it could be cost effective in the future to make more, to find more pulp. To use to make more wood fibre products. Whether it's landscaping, you have Australian native landscapes next to us at, at Oberon as well. Or whether it's the bark that we use as fuel, you know, there is, it's just such a great product. And I know I'm obviously biased because I've been in the sector for a long time, but it's, uh, it's just such a great product. And it lines up so perfectly with, uh, with, you know, the, the current discussions. Around circular economy, climate change, you know. Just have a look at the, the federal election on the weekend and the teal candidates and the climate change and the, the power of climate change that came into that. That, uh, that campaign. So I think it's a, I think. The vision would be, whether it's private sector or government, someone needs to continue to invest. We talk in generalities or big picture numbers about the billion extra trees. But for my, for mine, it's, it's not happening fast enough. I think there's lots of words and not enough action. We are, we are attempting to take action as a company, but I think it needs a bigger push.
I'll just throw it at Mr. Barrett for the last couple of minutes.
I'll, I'll go different where I was gonna go, but you talked about that, the climate change and the top push. Are we seeing a demand or a, a want from industry, from consumers to wanna shift away from timber? We seem to have the, you know, the local supply concerns, the import concerns, the, you know, alleged resistance from community towards forestry. But yet we're still using seventy five percent timber in our construction, I'm guessing. But yet we're still using seventy-five percent timber in our construction and I'm guessing it's greater than that in cabin trees though.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Why is that not shifting?
Well, I think if you have a look, there's been, uh, for a long time now, the forest industries receives a lot of bad press and obviously I believe unfair press about what happens with the use of forest products. But I think if you do look, and as I said in my opening submission, you know, the, the global demand for wood products is growing and growing per capita. And people are understanding that the use of timber is a, is, is exactly as Jim says. We are now talking about the circular, the circular economy, the utilization of a wood resource, which does grow, it is the ultimate renewable. You know, if you're looking for solar panels, you know, it's great that Jim has a heap on his factory, I have a heap on my factory. But you've got, what, twenty million hectares of solar panel happening here in this state and they're called trees. And I think people are understanding that the, the value that a tree has, if we can utilize that rather than using other materials that have a higher embodied energy, is a good thing for the, for the environment, not a bad thing. I would like to think that seventy percent goes to eighty percent, ninety percent. And I think the, I think the community is understanding that now.
Can I just ask one more quick question of you, Mr Drysdale? Your FTMA, um, you've also got some concerns about the future of the timber industry. Your members in Victoria and Western Australia, what's the feel there as we shift away from forestry?
I'm sorry, away from hardwood, not.
From hardwood, sorry.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
I, I think it's just, you know, it's a, it's a compounding effect really. I mean, especially in Victoria, a lot of F seventeen hardwood was used down there, big ash coming out of the, the forest there. And, you know, it's, and there's going to be a whole lot of conjecture, of course, about this, about the sustainable, the sustainability of how they do that. And I think, you know, you're not going to get better at it if you stop doing it. And I think that the answer is that we get better at doing things, we just don't stop doing things. Um, you know, just because somebody speeds or you have a car crash doesn't mean you ban cars on the road. You know, you, you go and you address the problem, you make better cars, you make better roads, you don't, you don't ban cars. And I think that, you know, on that basis, um, you know, there's probably a bit of head shaking going on there about, well, what, how does this make any sense? How do we get better if we stop it?
And thank you for that, very important clarification.
Yeah.
Could, could I just one follow up quickly? We're just going to lunch, but just on that last point, I, I think you were at the back, you might have heard, um, the Housing Industry Association. I asked that question, um, a- about those sort of, um, uh, hardwood products. And the indication was that, well, yeah, accessible such as Victoria, because we're doing it, they, they might find that a useful product. But where it's not accessible in Canberra, they'll just go with an engineered product and probably cheaper. So, you know, I, I just do wonder what, you know, obviously that, that resistance to forestry is focused almost exclusively on the native hardwood sector and not, not really any resistance to softwood sector. So I'm just wondering if those alternatives are quite clear there and ultimately that's not as disruptive as some might make out.
I think if we look at use of hardwood in the frame and truss industry, it certainly decreased over time. And that's primarily based on availability. Um, and they've sought alternatives and it's coming out of, you know, LVL, I mean, uh, there's an LVL plant in West Australia. I don't think that was actually mentioned in a previous, um, subdivision. But I think it produces something like thirty percent of our needs, I'm not sure, I'll take that on notice. But, um, the hardwood is not available, so we've gone to an imported primarily in, by, by great percentage, an imported LVL. If the product was available back in Australia as a hardwood product, it would move back if the, if the price and span, um, scenario worked. And I think that, you know, it's, it's, if somebody wants their house built, I don't think they're really going to say, is that a, is that a imported, you know, forest, managed forest LVL or is it a domestic managed forest solid piece of timber?
With the supply, we could have an LVL facility on the east coast though, actually, it's just a matter of.
We're back, we're back to, we're back, we're, we're back, we're back to supply and we're back to the economics. We're not going to, you're not going to get away from it. Yeah, it's, it's going to come back every single time.
Without going on too much, but the LVL is, is not as easy to make. In a previous life when I was with Cartagol Harvey, we closed down the Ngwari LVL facility in South Australia. And LVL requires a, a higher strength veneer to make the, the quality of the product. So Wesbe in, uh, Western Australia is the, as Warwick said, is the only manufacturer of, um, LVL domestically at the moment. And they mix some hardwood in with their softwood to get the strength characteristics required of that LVL.
Okay, well, that well and truly takes us to time, um, but I think we could proceed and talk for hours to you guys. Um, but thank you for your time and, and the information you provided. And also once again, thank, thank you Jim for giving us that fantastic tour. Um, I believe you may have taken a couple of questions on notice, so the committee secretary will be in touch.
Okay.
Um, about that, once again, thank you both for coming in today.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
From the Department of Primary Industries, Local Land Services, uh, and the Department of Planning and Environment. Um, I do note that we've had some of these witnesses before, so the following people, uh, Mr Nick Millam, Dr Brad Law and Dr Adam Tindall. We do not need to swear you in, as you've already been previously sworn in. But we will need to swear in, uh, Mr Orr and Dr Georgina Kelly and Dr Tom Sullibrizi.
Yes.
Um, so I'll start with you, Mr Orr, if you could state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
Uh, Stephen Jonathan Orr, Chief Executive Officer, Local Land Services. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now that to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Dr Kelly.
Dr Georgina Louise Kelly, Executive Director, Science Economics and Insights from the Department of, of Environment and Planning. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you.
Dr Thomas Martin Sullibrizi, the Interim Director, Remote Sensing and Landscape Science with Department of Planning and Environment. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Sure, uh, now would anyone like to make a short opening statement? Or do you want to go straight into the question?
Not from D P I.
No?
Not from D P I.
Excellent, um, well, I thought I might just start it off by offering the opportunity. You, you, this is obviously our last hearing, um, I imagine you've been following what we've been doing reasonably closely. Is there anything that's been put to us through submissions, through evidence, uh, on site visits? Um, or events today that you want to respond to or clarify? Has anything changed, I guess, from your submission, um, the twenty seventh of May last year that you want to update, uh, the committee on? And just sort of provide that opportunity now?
Uh, Chair, there was evidence given to the committee, uh, in, uh, at the Kosha hearing, particularly around, uh, Dr Law's research and querying its, um, validity and the, and, and the conclusions that were, that were drawn from that research. And we would like the opportunity to respond to those comments.
Yeah, by all means.
I'll hand it to Dr Law.
Yep, well, I'd just like to say that, um, our research generally is very consistent with previous science that's been done on koalas in the forestry space. Um, and, well, regenerating areas as well, so that includes studies on koalas in regeneration on ex mine sites and recent research on koalas in Blue Gun plantations in Victoria. Um, and we went to, I guess we went to, um, great lengths to be careful about designing our study. We made sure that we had control unharvested sites so that that way we could, um, account for any environmental differences from year to year in the comparisons that we made. So that's a standard thing to do in, um, scientific experiments. Um, we also undertook sophisticated modelling to estimate koala density. So to do that, we contracted a world leading expert from Canada to do the modelling for us. Prior to doing the experiment, we validated that method across a range of different sites in New South Wales, um, to show that we do get plausible koala estimates from that approach. And also during the experiment, we, um, used koala detection dogs to collect fresh scats so that we could do genetic analysis on the individuals at, at one of our study sites to look at sex ratio and also estimate the number of individuals using a different method. And that produced a comparable estimate to our acoustic method. Um, and also on top of that acoustic approach, we've been doing other research. Uh, for example, GPS tracking of koalas in forestry landscapes. So looking at how individuals use that landscape, getting fine scale information on, um, use of regenerating areas and exclusion areas in adjacent areas. So all those results together are, um, I guess, supporting our conclusions in our paper. And those other scientific studies are also reviewed in that published scientific paper.
And if I might add to that with your lead chair, um, the, uh, that research, uh, well, I appreciate that there's been other views expressed to, to the committee in, in the various hearings. Um, uh, Dr Law's research particularly relating to the impact of selective harvesting at different periods of time on koala popul-, uh, presence and density, uh, is quite unique. So there, in fact, there, there isn't comparative a- analysis being done by others. Uh, that would, that would directly either, uh, that could be directly compared to the work that Brad has done.
Thank you. Um, Mr Orr, did you want to offer any?
Uh, Chair, probably the main thing from local land services perspective is the commencement of the new PNF codes on the second of May. Um, obviously, you know, following, um, the NRC, uh, report, um, which, uh, recommended, uh, that the codes be made uh, by, uh, the Minister for Agriculture and Western New South Wales, uh, with the concurrence of the Minister for the Environment. Um, that concurrence, uh, was ultimately provided, um, by the Minister for the Environment and the new codes commenced on the second of May, uh, which I understand the committee would be aware of. Uh, I might ask Dr Tindall just to elaborate on, I guess, a couple of key points regarding the new codes, if it's helpful for the committee.
Yeah, sure.
I think a couple of things to stress in terms of, uh, the new codes of practice. The first is the NRC's findings on those new codes. The first is that, that they are a substantive improvement on the previous codes of practice. That they fill all of the minister's legislative requirements, particularly those around ecologically sustainable forest management. Um, that they met the dual commitments the government had made in terms of robust protections for koalas and certainty and consistency for primary producers and importantly that they provide greater clarity, um, and ease of use for landholders. So, um, a really good outcome in terms of those new codes of practice.
Sure, and a- anything from the Department of Planning and Environment, do you have anything to?
Uh, just with respect to, uh, koala research, you'll be aware that the koala strategy has committed one hundred and ninety-three point three million to the next phase of the koala strategy, uh, with forty-three million to, um, more research and gathering of information, which will fill the gaps identified in the first phase of the strategy. So Department of Planning and Environment is also, um, has its, uh, New South Wales Wildlife Drone Hub. So we are, um, researching, um, thermal drones to look at occupancy and presence of koalas. Um, it's a six times more efficient than some of the other methods. And so that will also help us to identify not just, um, transitory, um, presence of koalas but populations. Uh, the, there will be a baseline assessment done by twenty twenty-five, looking at up to fifty koala populations. And there will be obviously an opportunity to, um, harmonize, compare the, the various methods for koala, um, population and presence. Um, so there's an opportunity there to continue to, um, harmonize all of the science, um, for understanding koala populations. Um, and on that harmonizing of science, that was also done for the PNF codes, for the mapping, for the interim koala prescription map. Where for the North Coast, um, code, uh, we looked at, um, uh, harmonizing the, our colleagues' mapping work from D P I with that of the mapping work from the Koala Habitat Information Base. So that's informed, um, the, uh, tree species which have increased in the PNF code from the ten, um, primary feed and five to secondary feed to fifteen primary, uh, feed and five. So the new codes include not just records of koalas, but rather also, um, uh, prescriptions or a, a guidance layer, the prevention, the, um, uh, PNF, uh, koala, uh, prescription layer, which is an interim layer, which indicates high to very high koala habitat for those four code, uh, regions.
Thank you, well, I might just open up the questions.
Yeah, good.
Thanks, David, Chair.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, I'm not quite sure, it's probably, uh, Mr Millam, but I'm, my first couple of questions. I'm just not quite sure how it fits in with forestry policy, research and development. So, um, one of the things that's been exercised in the mind of the committee members, uh, is around purchasing of land for plantation and the, um, economics behind that. So, um, we've heard, um, that, uh, whenever Forest Corp are in the market trying to purchase, that they, they're getting bumped out at, at the auction stage. Um, and we've had others present some sort of, there's some testimony around, uh, it's too, the land is a good agricultural land and too expensive to be, too valuable, sorry, to be putting down a, uh, particularly softwood plantation. Do you do that sort of economic modeling around, uh, in your, in your section of D P I, Mr Millam?
Uh, the answer is, is no, we don't actually do it, but we have, uh, sponsored that type of work to be done. Uh, so a few years ago, we had a consultant, a consulting company look at the, the economics of plantation forestry uh, and what the particular impediments were to, particularly private investment in plantation forestry. I guess they are, they're reasonably obvious in a way. Uh, that, um, the, the, the primary challenge, uh, sorry, uh, and my background is in economics, um, not in forestry. Um, so I can understand the primary challenge is, it's primarily associated with the, um, the length of time before you get a payoff, payback from the investment and then the risk associated with that. Uh, so I'd say, uh, the actual payoffs, uh, tend to be reasonably competitive, but you've got to wait such a long time and there's such a high level of risk associated with that, that, that is a challenge for private investors. However, what we are now seeing with developments in the carbon market, um, the potential for, um, for biodiversity offsets in certain types of plantation development, et cetera. So these, these emerging opportunities are all, uh, I'm sorry, and increased opportunities in relation to the use of, uh, of residues from sawlog production. Uh, all of those things, uh, started add up to improving, um, the actual economics of plantation investment as a, as an opportunity for private investors.
And, um, those emerging opportunities arising from, from carbon markets and the like, are you, is there any work being done on that at the moment? That, uh, could, I guess, gain you ad, moving towards plantation?
Uh, so we're doing some work internally, which is, it's only just launched, commenced in relation to developing some guides uh, in relation to how, uh, a private investor, a, a, a farm landholder, rural landholder who wanted to, or is considering a plantation investment, how they might then access the carbon market opportunities. So basically trying to get some information out there that would help those who might, you know, probably don't have the, um, the, uh, the opportunities, the access to information that would assist them in making an informed decision. And we're working with our colleagues in Local Land Services in relation to then, uh, how we might get that information out, um, to landholders so they can make use of it when they're considering, uh, their, um, enterprise opportunities on the land, on their landholding.
Um, on another matter, I've been pursuing, um, with a number of witnesses, research and development and just how that is funded, what it looks like, uh, how it can be incentivized, but from within departments, um, uh, resources, what sort of research and development, uh, is the, the government involved in?
So I'm not quite clear on what your.
So the research and development, what, what sort of research and development is the D P I involved in, uh, around forestry? Are you doing any work to assist, are you doing any joint part, like partnership work, research, are you doing?
Uh, so the focus, uh, we, we've got a number of focus areas for our research, which is, which, uh, which is primarily in the area of, areas of forest science. Uh, so we've got a big focus on forest biosecurity, um, so forest health and, uh, and biosecurity challenges within, uh, both plantation and native forestry. So within our team, for example, we've got, um, um, Australian leaders in relation to plant diseases such as myrtle rust, um, uh, dieback, uh, those types of challenges. And we undertake surveying, um, and, and that includes at, at high risk points of entry such as around Port Kembla and those types of things. So that's that biosecurity side of things. Uh, we're also doing work in forest ecology. Uh, that is primarily, uh, not designed to support industry development, except insofar as ensuring that, uh, seeking to ensure that the regulatory settings that we have in place for forestry, uh, whether they be in plantation forestry or in native forestry, uh, are effective at achieving, uh, their objectives or whether, or in fact whether they then, uh, may need to, uh, be modified. Uh, so that's hence the, uh, the, the reason why people like Brad are doing the work they're doing. Um, so it's to support our, you know, the government's regulatory settings. Um, and we've, we also do a fair bit of work on, uh, with industry funding, uh, largely through organisations like the Forestry Corporation, but not only through the corporation. but not only through the corporation, through other funding sources as well, in forest resource assessment, which is an increasing focus on remote methods to assist in assessing the amount of harvestable material that would be, that's in a forest area, which then obviously helps with determining, making your harvesting plans. It gives you a, a, gives you information before you actually make a decision about going into harvest, about what you're likely to get out of that, about, about, out of that area. So they're key areas of focus for us.
And that biosecurity research, are we putting a cost on weeds such as, so for instance, I think we are. We're achieving, I think, in one of the, the Softwoods Working Group presented some figures around, I guess, like two and a half thousand dollars per hectare, per year impact on the productive gain from softwood plantation arising just from blackberry. So in that biosecurity research that you were talking about earlier, are we looking at the costs impact on forests of weeds, weeds and pests?
No, not, not within my group, we don't, we're not looking at weeds. We're primarily, in that biosecurity space, we're primarily looking at pests that actually affect the trees themselves.
Okay. Is there anyone in DPI looking at that?
Within forests, I don't believe so. More broadly, I'd need to take that on notice in relation.
If you're good, I'm just, we're clearly aware of government, this is, who's actually looking at this. Can I, Mr Law, can I just, so the PNF codes that have just been put in place, so the concurrence, it's pretty important here. So the concurrences between the Minister for Agriculture, Western New South Wales and the Minister for Environment, is that correct? And can you just walk, so how does that work? Does it, do they sign it together, does one sign it and send it off with a brief to the other minister to sign it? Or what, just, just, how, how does that concurrence work? I just want to get my head around that.
Yep. So, you know, obviously the NRC handed down its report, Mr Beach. There was then further discussions between LLS, EPA and now EHG to work through a series of issues. Those discussions ultimately landed on a couple of issues which we still needed to work through. Having done that, and there was agreement between everyone, the Minister for the Environment was provided with a copy of the codes and he wrote to the Minister for Agriculture and Western New South Wales indicating his concurrence to the codes. And then ultimately, having received that concurrence, and the Minister for the Environment also signed the codes, as you will note in the document, the Minister for Agriculture and Western New South Wales and had the authority to sign off on the codes.
Okay. And is there, is there a review phase?
Twelve months.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep, twelve months.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mr Beach, I could come back to your first question to me. Because I neglected to mention our forest carbon cycling research. So underpinning, obviously to be able to underpin information that might go in a carbon guide out to someone who's thinking about plantation, for example. We need to know about what carbon cycling actually is within our forests. And we have significant research activity and capability within that space.
I think where I was going, Mr Millam, with that question is that, it's not that there's no research and development being undertaken, no research. There is, as your response has clearly indicated, there is a body of research being undertaken. It's sort of just one, important to get that on the record, that there is, it is actually being undertaken. But I guess trying to get a bit of an idea about how that fits in with some of the private sector investment as well. That's sort of where we were going, and I'm glad you did that, carbon cycle, that's pretty important work. Can I, oh no, that's for EPA, no, that one, good, thanks.
Could I jump into just the plantations quickly, follow on from?
Yeah, sure.
And I, I guess, Mr Millam, you know, DPI sets the policy parameters, I guess government does, and DPI implements. I'm just trying to understand the role that you play in setting plantation policy. Forestry Corporation has some money, I think, to try and find some land and expand the softwood plantations. Does DPI or government have a target on the softwood and hardwood plantations they'd like to see operating in New South Wales?
So we've set ourselves an internal target of, which reflects the fact that the Commonwealth, the Australian Government has set a plantation expansion target. We've set ourselves an internal target of trying to increase the plantation estate, doing what we can by ten percent by twenty thirty.
What would that take it to? That's the softwood plantation estate?
That's the total plantation estate. That would take it to, sorry, I do have those numbers here, it's about four hundred and thirty-nine thousand hectares.
And can you, can you provide a breakdown between softwood and hardwood?
Well, we haven't separated out, we don't have a separate target for softwood versus hardwood. We're just, we're keen to do what we can, particularly through working with private landholders in that farm forestry space to try and encourage increased plantation development. So this is private sector plantation development.
Why, why wouldn't you? Because I mean, it's the softwood plantations which seem to be the real sort of challenge here for industry and the key driver of a lot of the, you know, the economic use of timber, the need for the construction industry. We've had all of the softwood users coming to us saying we don't have security of supply. Government's obviously the least at the moment. So I'm just, why wouldn't that be the focus? It's hard with the focus, it seems like that might be if it's farm-based forestry is your focus.
No. By using the term farm forestry, where that's a catchall term for both plantation forestry and native forestry on farms, just on private landholdings. There's a, while the softwood estate is obviously the, by the vast majority of the plantation estate within New South Wales, there's also significant demand for hardwood timber over and above what we can supply from our native forests, what can be derived from our native forests. So expanding the plantation estate, the hardwood plantation estate is just.
Because Forestry Corporation's been logging well under the sustainable yield of their forests for over a decade now. So if there's demand, what's going on there?
We'd probably best to address that question to the Forestry Corporation, except I can provide a response in the broad sense that obviously the corporation must remain within the long-term ecologically sustainable yield of those forests. But then they also, because of their commercial imperative, must also, can only really harvest where they can.
You're talking primarily pulp, pulp then, aren't you really, for hardwood pulp? Where the market would be interested, that you'd be looking at hardwood plantations for?
In terms of plantation development, we don't only use hardwood for pulp.
But that'd be the biggest market driver. When you say there's a gap, the biggest market driver, we heard when we were on the North Coast, that those hardwood plantations aren't much a shop for flooring.
There's, there's significant challenges with the, with large parts of the plantation estate that were planted through other initiatives such as the Management Investor Scheme process where there was poor species and regional selection. So setting aside the mistakes of the past, the broader issue is that there is significant demand for, unmet demand for hardwood timber for a variety of high quality uses other than pulp. For example, you know, spotted gum flooring and power poles and bridges and piles, pallets, there's all sorts of uses of hardwood that require sawn timber. And, and that sawn timber, particularly from our native forests, can only be produced from, operate, as the byproducts of residue of operations where the primary purpose is high quality.
How many hectares of new hardwood plantations have been established in New South Wales in the last decade?
I'd need to take that question on notice.
Especially not right.
So, I mean, we have a, we have our regulatory database.
Isn't it?
It's been, yeah, it's been very low, absolutely. There's been very little private investment.
But you're relying on private investment. You're not, you're not really looking at expanding on the existing state-owned hardwood plantation or state-owned softwood plantation estate. That seems to be the policy position.
Not entirely. There is, there's been New South Wales government injections into the Forestry Corporation in recent years, specifically for the purpose of assisting them in increasing their plantation estate.
How many hectares of new softwood plantations have been able to be established in the last ten years?
So that question would need, by the Forestry Corporation, that would need to be addressed to the corporation.
Thank you. That's all I've got on plantations, but I'd be keen to come back.
Yeah, sure. I'm looking, Mr Barra wants to ask a question, otherwise I'll throw back to Mr.
I can certainly go. We heard some research from University of Newcastle this morning about the, specifically the Great Koala Park creating, you know, nine, ten thousand jobs at the cost of only six, seven hundred jobs. What we worked out was that the nine thousand jobs were including the indirect jobs, but the six hundred jobs were forestry only. Can someone give us a bit of a picture about what indirect jobs are associated with the forestry industry and have we got any numbers around that?
So within the Department of Primary Industries, we have a group, it's not part of forestry, it's part of the broader department, that undertakes analysis of the economics of various primary industries. So they do analysis of employment and value add in forestry as well for us. So they have generated estimates and they're published in our Performance Data and Insights publication, which is online every year. That, the estimates that they provide and they are estimates, anyone who reports some accurate industry data below the state level, it's not a fact of the case that the ABS, the Australian Bureau of Statistics, Labor Statistics simply don't drop down to that sort of level, particularly when you're trying to distinguish between hardwood and softwood. So our Performance Data and Insights team do estimates for us. And then, so I have some estimates in front of me and if we're talking, say, particularly North Coast, which is where the Great Koala National Park proposal is based, the estimates provided to us of employment in the hardwood sector up there, up on the North Coast is about two thousand six hundred jobs.
As direct jobs?
That's, that's, that's in the value chain for forestry, so, and first stage processing as well.
And what about the supply, you know, the, I guess, support services, the mechanics and tire shops and?
They'll be on top of that.
We got no indication of what that might be?
No, sorry, I couldn't provide that information.
I guess going back to your research, Dr Law, we heard a lot, it seems to be a lot of my research is bigger than yours throughout this whole process. How do we get to the point where research is so conflicting and how do, how do I wade through that?
Well, I guess really I would say that the research is not conflicting, but, you know, in our, in our published paper outlining the results of our research, we reviewed other research that's been done on koalas and forestry. And there are, no one has done this before and after harvesting experiment like we've done to look at density. But there are other pieces of research that people have looked at parts of the puzzle, I guess. And generally, that's consistent with the findings that we found, that, you know, koalas can live in a range of different situations. I think their response to a disturbance like forestry depends on how much of the forest is retained at the time. And across state forests broadly, fifty-seven percent of the state forest landscape is not harvested. So that's really important in providing refuge areas for koalas. And I think the, the results, or sorry, the study that we looked at was selective harvesting. So there's a lot of trees that are retained in addition to those exclusion areas. And as I say, most of the research is actually consistent, or all of the research, I would say, is consistent with our findings.
So I'm jumping around a little bit because there's a few things I need to come back and tie off. We also heard this morning about using timber as a substitute for other more sort of carbon intensive products. Can someone elaborate on that for me? I guess by the same token, we're hearing that still seventy percent of construction, seventy-four, seventy-five percent of construction timber is still, of construction material is still timber. You know, why are we still using timber and not shifting to other more environmentally friendly products?
We don't have our carbon scientific experts here with us, but they do, a couple of them work for me. So I can sort of pass on the types of comments that they, I'm sure they'd make if they were here. One of the obvious ones is that timber is a, as a product, when, when, the, the research has demonstrated that as a product, when you take into account, even timber from native forests, that when you take into account the full substitution metrics of alternative products, particularly if you think in the construction space of things like cement, concrete, steel, which are high carbon, non-renewable, they're mined, non-renewable resources. When you're taking into account all of those factors, then timber is by far the lowest carbon footprint in that natural fact. It's a carbon sequestering building material and on top of that, it's totally renewable. So we, you, we regrow it and you can do it again. So we've got those types of factors to take into account. And what we're seeing is that's being reflected in increasing demand for timber in construction. And we'd expect to see, I'd certainly personally expect to see more of that into the future, not just as a consequence of the rising demand for increased housing construction due to population growth, but also due to matters such as the changes to the, to the residential dwelling construction code announced in New South Wales just last year by Minister Stokes. That's the basics, B A S I X code, which is requiring a reduced greenhouse gas emission, greenhouse gas emissions from new residential dwelling construction. Changes to the National Construction Code back in two thousand and nineteen to allow increased, to allow medium rise construction out of timber up to twenty-five metres. And we're seeing increased interest in that space. So there's, there's a lot of interest within the construction sector and within, and those who are doing the designs for construction in utilising opportunities to reduce the emission factors associated with those, with those buildings. And timber is an obvious way and of actually doing that because of the lower carbon footprint associated with that as a construction material.
Do you need a different, like, to go that higher, we need longer beams or different types of timber or is it that?
There's, there's the, the, the main interest particularly for the higher, higher that medium rise construction is in manufactured timber products, which is a, a really interesting development that's happened probably in the last fifteen years within the forestry sector that's actually made, then made, but made, provided opportunities for increased value from timber products and from what might otherwise be residues in some, in some cases be treated as a waste by product, has actually become a product of significant value in enabling those, construction of those, of building components that meet those high engineering standards that previously we thought you could only get from either very heavy timbers or from concrete and steel. That's now no longer the case.
So going back to the questions about research and development, have we done any work to suggest that in ten, twenty, thirty years, that seventy, seventy-five percent will change or stay the same? Have we got any vision on that?
We haven't done any research in that, but personally I expect that it may rise, that timber has got, so if we, if, as we did last year, we introduce additional requirements in relation to increasing the thermal efficiency of buildings. Wood is a natural insulator, so you might expect to see increased interest in the use of timber paneling, for example, which we, we tend not to do a lot of, we tend to have gone out of that in the last hundred years or so. But there may well be, I'd expect there may well be increased interest in moving back into that type of use of timber in order to, to meet the challenge of reducing the carbon footprint of those buildings. As well as the fact that, as I mentioned, it's, it's got natural thermal properties and it's a beautiful product. It certainly looks nice and that's an attractive thing in its own right, in its own right.
More flood resistant as well, isn't it?
It's, my understanding is it's got, because it's a flexible product, it's more earthquake resistant and all sorts of other properties that make timber construction of significant interest in the medium and now high-rise sector.
I'll throw back to Mr Beach.
I'll throw back to Mr. Vichy.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so, uh, Dr. Kelly, I think in your opening address you just spoke about mapping, you picked up, uh, drew up some of the mapping from like LLS or DPI, but anyway, can you just, uh, elaborate on what mapping, uh, the department does, uh, in this space?
So, um, Department of Planning and Environment, um, launched the, in 2019, the Koala Habitat Information Base, which is significant mapping of, um, land cover change, but also to understand where a koala habitat is both from low to very high suitability habitat. So, um, we've mapped that for the state and have those classes, um, in six levels from, uh, from low to, to very high suitability. For the purposes of the, uh, PNF, um, prescription, Koala Prescription Layer, um, our colleagues in DPI also have done mapping in the North Coast area. It was for a different purpose and at a different scale. Uh, nevertheless, um, taking up the point that, um, Dr. Law made about, um, the contributing science, not conflicting science. We worked together with DPI to, um, bring together that, that mapping, um, for the North, North Coast area where we, um, looked at what the, uh, two highest levels of koala habitat suitability were, high to very high. And the map reflects, um, where either DPI or DPE considers that to be the case. That's for the North Coast PNF code. There are the three others where DPI hasn't done the mapping and so that then, um, refers to um, planning and environments, um, and that, uh, model mapping.
Okay, and, and post the bushfires, did you, were you involved in the, uh, extent and severity or something else?
The fire extent and severity mapping, yes, that's, um, my division, um, has done that work.
So you, and so you're going to took that, that sort of mapping as well. Does, does that include modeling? So be, as a, I guess, a predictor of, uh, future fire intensity, you did that, you did that sort of work as well?
The, um, FESM mapping was to look at the fire extent and severity mapping of the actual fires and is continuing to do work, it's both modeled and ground truthed. So in the purposes for, for the, uh, 1920 bushfires, there was two phases of mapping, a very initial, um, uh, burnt area map, because the difference between the severity can be different to the extent. So you have the fire ground as defined by RFS, but what, um, our division did was to come in to understand, using this, um, modeling and ground truthing, to understand the severity throughout the canopy. So whether it was the, just the canopy that was burnt or right throughout down through to the understory, because that obviously informed, um, the potential for, um, recovery for both flora and fauna species. And that was considered as part of, um, our risk assessment advice to the EPA post the 1920 bushfires.
And, and this might be a dumb question, but, um, so that mapping was undertaken sort of within a timeframe post those, that fire event. Have we gone back even subsequent, in recent times to see what the regrowth has been like? Have we mapped the recovery?
The work continues on and yes, um, it's the work, uh, looking, trying to do it, um, every 12 months because there's a difference between an initial flush post the fires and actual recovery. So that work, um, fire extent severity mapping continues on, um, both on the, uh, the National Park estate and also across the rest of the areas of the state.
And do we do work around, does the mapping have to work around the impacts of climate change?
Uh, the fire extent severity mapping doesn't at the moment, but nevertheless, um, our division does do significant work on not only the climate change projections, but the impact of those climate change projections on, um, a range of species. Um, Dr. Salbrezi, um, has led the biodiversity indicator program, which is New South Wales, um, uh, status and trends. And there are a range of indicators that help us to understand, um, the potential impacts of climate, um, on those indicators. I would also note that, um, the bushfire risk research management hub, um, or did a significant amount of work uh, post the fires for the bushfire inquiry to determine the impacts or otherwise of various land management practices on those mega fires.
So that, that clearly you're holding a fair body of work there that's pretty important and critical to a number of decisions that government would make. Um, I, I take it's, it's, it's digitalized mapping, you, you, you're not, you're not still using old paper maps, we've moved to
We have, uh, but Dr. Salbrezi may like to.
Yes, I can comment. So the, the New South Wales biodiversity indicator program is a statutory program which my team leads. And in, in review, we have a spatial resilience indicator, so it has been developed, but it's in scientific peer review. It's a measure of ecosystem resilience to climate change and it focuses on the capacity of biodiversity to persist as ecological niches shift due to climate change across the whole state. It incorporates the impacts of past clearing, loss of ecological condition and habitat fragmentation. Currently, the indicator does not specifically include the impacts of the 2019, 2020 fire. So it applies across the state, it is a modeled, uh, uh, um, product and it is digital.
Okay, so can I just, I just want to go back to the PNF mapping then. So, so you, uh, did I hear you correctly, um, Dr. Kelly, when you said that so LLS had, and DPI had mapping for the north, but not for the other divisions?
That's correct because, well, I'll let DPI speak, but, um, and my, my understanding is that, that mapping that, um, from DPI was, um, predominantly for the coastal IFOA.
Yeah.
Um, whereas, uh, DPE mapping is, uh, broader based across the state. So we took the advantage of taking the best science, um, for the North Coast, um, code. Uh, and what, and, and then relied on the DPE mapping for the other three codes areas.
Okay, um, and did people challenge the mapping?
Um, maps are always challenged, um, depending on how people receive them. Um, maps are as accurate as they can be and always, um, seek to improve them. And that's also why there's a 12-month review period on these koala prescription, um, maps. It allows for further, um, modeling, further field validation, um, and there's a process of continual improvement for all maps. Um, maps however do give, um, certainty to landholders. They're able to very quickly see where, um, uh, their requirements or otherwise are. Um, so I think it's a, maps are generally a very helpful product to landholders as they make their decision and understand, um, what's required of them on their land and the various approval processes that in this case for PNF, LLS would, um, undertake.
Okay, second, this might be a question for LLS, but if someone was to challenge the, the, the maps being utilized with PNF uh, as it applied to their, their parcel of land, what is the process, um, to have the maps revisited or ground truthed?
For the purposes of the PNF Koala Prescription, um, should a landholder not think that the map is accurate, they have the ability to undertake, um, their own survey, um, and advise that, but LLS may like to add further.
Yeah, I'm happy to add to that. Um, so there's a process in place in the codes themselves. It'll require the landholder to identify the area in question and then, um, get the, uh, survey conducted by suitably qualified experts. So someone with three years' experience either in forest science, natural resource management or environmental management, um, they'll do that against a protocol, um, that'll be available on our website. Um, that process will then be undertaken by that suitably qualified expert and overseen by the NRC and as, um, as Dr., as Georgina, as Georgina indicated earlier, that'll be overseen in a 12-month process by the NRC to improve that mapping over time. It's relatively accurate in Northern New South Wales, but there's less certainty in some of the other regions.
And so far as a landholder, we want to initiate that process, do I pay for those surveys to be redone or is there, is it picked, is a tab picked up by the, the government?
There'll be a combination of two pathways, so it's a suitably qualified expert to give people the opportunity to get someone to do it for them, provided they meet that threshold of qualification. But there'll also be an opportunity for either LLS EPA or EES staff who are suitably qualified to conduct those surveys.
Okay, and I guess, so, so the mapping is actually pretty critical to the forest space, whether it be PNF, um, or managing the, uh, the privates, that the, um, uh, the native estate, would that, that would be correct?
Mapping always provides guidance and clarity for the landholders.
Okay, that's excellent, thank you.
Um, I might to chair, just in relation to, um, other, other, uh, climate change vulnerability assessment that's happening. We have a project within the Department of Primary Industries, um, which is a broad-based project of which forestry is only uh, one part and we've got, and our particular part is to focus on softwood. Uh, but so there's research happening within uh, uh, DPI to assess the impacts of climate change across the broad landscape at a statewide level and how that may then, you know, impact on, obviously the focus of DPI is on, uh, primary production, uh, opportunities. Uh, but there is an aspect of that which deals with the likely impact on, uh, softwood production.
Is that, so is that the, when you say the likely impact, is that solely an economic impact or is it, uh?
No, that's, that's the, the, the geophysical impact of the climate, the change in climate and what that might actually mean for where you could, um, economically produce, um, various primary commodity commodities, which one is, uh, some plantation software.
Yep. Um, I might just pick up on one, uh, area that Mr. Barrett was talking about was the Great Koala National Park. We had, as Mr. Barrett was saying, we had the University of Newcastle here and they indicated that they couldn't get any clear figures from, uh, the government in terms of staffing of such a park. Um, so the figures around that were a bit vague and rubbery, to say the least. So I'm just wondering whether the department's done any work on how such a park would have to be staffed. At all, with, Ms. Kelly, do you have any insight into that?
I don't have that information here, so would have to take that question on notice.
Yep, sure.
Sure. If I could, um, maybe return a bit more focus on koalas, um, Dr. Law, um, I appreciate your explanation at the start. Um, Northeast Forest Association's published a pretty specific critique of, um, of the science. Um, well, not so much the science, but I guess the, the, the findings and you'd be aware that there has been, uh, some, there have been some people sort of in the, you know, on, on the political side of this debate that have used to some degree, um, your science to suggest that koalas like logged forests, um, prefer even logged forests. And I, I think that's an un, you know, an unfortunate, um, characterization of it. But just to, I guess, just to be clear, because the koala, of course, was declared by the New South Wales Scientific Committee to be now endangered across New South Wales and identified logging as one of the many contributing factors to that. So your report is titled, um, uh, Regulated Timber Harvesting Does Not Reduce Koala Density in Northeast Forests in New South Wales. Is it your contention, just to be clear, that logging, uh, is not negative on koala populations in New South Wales?
Um, I, yeah, selective operations is, is what we looked at and.
So under the CFI away, like, just to be specific, under the CFI, if, if our state forests are logged under those conditions, it's, it's your, your evidence that that doesn't have a negative impact on koala populations?
That's correct, on the density of koalas as, as we measured them, um, and under the conditions of the IFOA where, um, various exclusion zones are kept for environmental reasons, including for koala protection.
Okay, so, but this is, I guess, where the, some of the, um, that's very qualified. So you're sort of suggesting that across the balance, across the landscape, because there's protections over there in that part of the state forest and there's a national park over there. On the regional scale, there's no impacts? Are you talking about no impacts on the local population in that particular state forest?
So that particular study, our, each of our study areas is about 400 hectares in size and a forestry compartment is probably approximately 250 hectares in size, but within each compartment, there is a mosaic of exclusion areas. So it's not so much there's, um, protection over here and logging over here. It's, um, it's, those areas are adjacent and intertwined as a mosaic. And so that, I think, is really critical for, um, mitigating potential impacts of forestry operations. That's, that's, that's why I think, that's what, that's what I think is the, the key factor.
Okay, because that's, I guess, as a layperson, it's okay because when that area is logged, the koala can just move over there and then when those trees regrow a bit, it'll start to come and feed a bit over here. But you'd agree, there's a net loss of feed resources for koalas from ongoing logging operations. So the ability, if it was good quality koala habitat for the koala populations to recover, at the moment they're declining. I mean, if forestry was good for koalas, we, you know, at the end of the day, we wouldn't have a continuing declining koala population is the way a layperson looks at it. So that, that's the vibe, right? They move over there, trees come up and then they can move back. So we sort of, maybe we stabilize koala populations within that mosaic, as you put it. We're not, it's not going to enable the koala to thrive, is it?
Um, well, our tracking shows that they're breeding in those areas, um, and, and as I say, it's, it's not koalas are moving over there and at some point later in time, they're coming back. In a selective operation, there are trees retained all through the operation as well as in those exclusion zones. So they are using those trees that are retained for various reasons, um, within the selective net harvest area.
But if there's a net loss of koala feed resource, which there is, and we know that some of the prime species are also the target species for the timber industry, the current capacity of those forests is less than it otherwise would be. Is it, that's fair to say, right?
It's fair to say that there is a net loss of trees, obviously, because.
Well, no, net loss of the capacity of those forests to sustain a greater koala population than might be there now.
I would say it's not necessarily clear that koalas are occurring at carrying capacity. So there's a range of reasons that can generally keep animal populations below carrying capacity. Could be disease, could be, um, dog predation, a whole range of other factors that can keep an animal below carrying capacity. So that some of those resources might be removed temporarily without necessarily impacting on the numbers.
One of the criticisms was that, um, the control sites showed consistent persistence of koalas. But at some of the, um, the other sites, it, it's, it showed that, um, there were large differences in calling activity, an increase in, oh, sorry, a decrease in the, um, uh, the density of calling in, in a majority of locations and more areas where there was no calling activity. And, and the suggestion that, um, that it, it basically describes presence rather than density in a meaningful way. And that some of the conclusions that have been drawn really are pretty difficult to, uh, accept.
Um, well, no, the, the method is designed to estimate density from calling animals and in relation to their, um, activity centers that we identify via an array of acoustic recorders. So the purpose is to estimate density and there is no, there is no suggestion that the density has declined after harvesting. Um, we present, in our paper, we present maps of that spatial distribution of calling activity. And there is definitely some shifting over time of those activity centers. Um, but also if you look at those maps carefully, the, the scales on each of the maps before and after are different.
Well, the specific analysis is there was a 36% increase in areas of no or very low male koala calling frequency um, compared to the controls, which exist, suggest a less sort of persistent and maybe more variable population in those areas. Disagree with that?
Yeah, I would disagree with that. On, on the basis that, um, the scales, if that's derived from the maps in our published paper, the scales on those maps are different. So the post-harvest, um, estimates of activity centers are actually greater when you look at those, the scales on those maps.
The koala is now declared a endangered species in New South Wales. We've got the scientists here from DPI, we've got scientists here and appreciate them involved in, 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 in mapping and implementing the DPE here. Would koalas be, um, better off, um, if we were to protect those areas of critical koala habitat? And I'm particularly talking about the koala hubs and the koala arcs from ongoing logging than they currently are.
Um, under the PNF codes, the existing CAPEMOMs, um, that core koala habitat is also protected?
Koala hubs, the specific DPE analysis of the koala hubs in New South Wales that I, you know, I think they're, they weren't made public, but through GIPPA they've been made public. We know that they exist and there's a lot of crossover, including with current harvesting activities and planned harvesting activities. If those areas of koala hub, which the Environment Department in New South Wales has identified as sort of critical for future protection, were protected from harvesting, would koalas be better off than they currently are or neutral?
I'll have to take that question on notice, other than to note that, um, the original investment of some 44.7% in the koala strategy is now 100%. I'll have to take that question on notice, other than to note that, um, the original investment of some 44.7 in the koala strategy is now 193. And we're seeking to do the baseline and understand those populations, but I can take that specific question on notice.
Use some of that 193 to buy out the logging contracts and remove logging from those areas of core koala habitat, koala hubs and koala arcs, would that be a good use of money to boost koala populations in New South Wales?
I'm sorry, Mr Field, that's an opinion, that's, I'm not quite to give, I can take it on notice.
If, if those areas identified as the department were protected from logging, regardless of how, you've got some money there, I appreciate you saying that, but if you're the scientist, if, if we stop logging those areas of critical koala habitat, would they be better off or neutral? Because I'm assuming that won't be worse.
Oh, can I just clarify my response to your previous question? I'm certainly not saying that, I've never said that logging of habitat is good for koalas. But what I have, what I am saying is that the impact can be managed and mitigated.
Sure. So I guess I'm taking to that next level, because right now they're going backwards. So we can manage the impacts, but they're currently going backwards at statewide scale and at a population and regional scale as well, to be fair. So I'm asking you now, appreciate that, but would the populations have a chance to recover? Or be better off if we remove logging from those areas of the identified koala hubs and arcs, which the Environment Department in New South Wales has identified as critical habitat, the koalas, many of which are inside the harvestable area of our state forests?
What, what Dr Law's research has demonstrated is that selective harvesting as practiced within the, uh, the rule set defined by the Coastal Integrated Forest Operations Approval, uh, is not having a detrimental effect on.
Yeah, I totally understand that. I totally understand that. But right now, koala's going backwards. And I'm saying, you know, this is about the future of the timber industry, but injecting itself into that debate is a discussion about this particular iconic threatened species. And I'm wondering if they're better off, more likely to recover and get taken off the endangered list if logging was to be removed from those areas of core koala habitat, those koala hubs and arcs, many of which are currently in the harvestable area of our state forests.
And what's, can I just, sorry, point of order, I guess. Dr Kelly's already indicated that, that Mr Phil's asking the opinion of these public service servants.
That's a sci, that's a.
A couple of times they've pointed to the research in response to their answer, I think. We're sort of harping on about trying to get this opinion from the, from the public servants.
I know, I'm asking for a scientific opinion, I mean, it's legitimate, we've got scientists here. And the scientists are prepared to go to a certain point, but there's a logical next step. And I, I don't think that's an, if you just say the science isn't clear on that, that's fine. If you say, look, we know that if we don't log it, we'll be, we've got, you know, our job is to balance the needs of the timber industry, that's fine too. But just, we've got 193 million, I'm sorry, that doesn't at all try to answer what I think is a legitimate question. So I'll give him one last chance, Chair, and move.
Well, to be fair, I think Miss Kelly did agree to take it on notice and get back to you, so. I think if you want a full and wholesome answer, I think.
Doctor Law looked like he was about to go there, but can we give him one last chance, Chair?
Well, just, just. Can be deceiving.
One extra piece of information that I think would be very useful in answering that question is having, having reliable monitoring data on koalas at these local population scales in relation to harvesting, fire, or whatever the threat may be. If we have that, uh, monitoring information, that, that's what we need to answer that question. And we, we're on the track to, to be collecting some of that, but it's, it's more of a long-term venture.
So more research needs to be done.
Monitoring.
And Mr Field, I would note that there's, of that 193 million, there's 107 million dedicated to protecting and restoring, um, 47,000 hectares of koala habitat. And as I mentioned previously, the, the 43.4 million, um, to support further koala research, which includes monitoring and the development of the statewide, um, baseline by 2025, so.
Just on that 107 million, I think that's a good point, because the department done any work on prioritizing, um, where that money should be spent and what areas in particular should be targeted for protection?
And I'll take that question on notice, thank you, Mr Field, thank you.
Just one further comment, I appreciate Chair you want to move on, but I, I think what Dr Law's research has, has indicated, um, is that whatever the various threats are, and there are a wide range of threats to koalas, um, whatever the various threats are, under the selective harvesting practices that can be conducted on the North Coast and the Coastal I F O A, those practices, what Dr Law's research is indicating is that those practices are not making koalas worse off. We're not in a position to answer a question about whether it makes them better off.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's not making them worse off.
Mr Beach, you look like you're.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Um, can I, I'm not sure which, uh, who is responsible for this, uh, but I'd suggest you take it on notice. But in the government submission, the whole of government submission, uh, on page 16, for the sake of tidying up, because the submission was lodged last year, we've now moved on a fair way. Uh, it talks about current and upcoming reviews that include, um, I suggest, well, reading that, I suggest that maybe some of these have now concluded. Um, it would be possible to get an update from the government on where those reviews are up to. So, you know, remake of the forestry regulation due for stage repeal on the first of July, 2021, like we're past that date. Um, Western I F O A reviews, which were due commencing 2021. The 12-month health check at the Coastal I F O A commencing in mid, mid 2021. Can we just update that information for the sake of putting together our, our report? I'm not sure who that is, who takes that on board on behalf of the whole of government, but if someone could, that would be nice. I might look at Mr Orr.
Head centre.
We'll, we'll ensure you get a coordinated response, Mr Beach.
Ah, good on you. Thank you. Thanks.
Um, I might just pick up on something while we're looking at the submission, same page. The industry advisory groups, I think we heard very early on from stakeholders that they would like to see some sort of industry council set up, and I'd note that these were established in 2012. How often do these advisory groups still meet or do they even still meet anymore?
I suspect, oh, oh, well, if, if I could just query or clarify whether you mean the, uh, the.
Softwood.
The forest, the forest industry task force, which was then transformed into the softwood industry advisory.
And the hardwood industry advisory group, how often do they?
So, so they're advisory groups to the minister, established by the minister and for the minister's, um, consultation purposes. Um, so, uh, we've had, actually had several changes of minister in the last recent period. Um, and those groups have not met since, um, uh, 20, I, I, well, sorry, I probably didn't take on, on notice exactly when they last met. But I think it might have been in, uh, early 2021. Uh, we were convening them, uh, they were being convened, uh, informally for consultation purposes in relation to the impact of the drought. Sorry, not the drought, the 1920 bushfires. Uh, and, um, in relation to the impact of those fires on, on the industry um, and the, and the best form, and, and then the best forms of, of recovery support that the government could provide. Uh, and then they were also used, um, again, without actually being formally convened, but as consultation mechanisms uh, in relation to, um, COVID, uh, and particularly the potential impacts on, on vehicle movements and, um, staff resources.
Okay, so I'm getting a sense that they're not really functioning, I guess, consistently. It's just been, they're being called up sporadically to have a chat to the minister when an issue arises. Um, and I think what the industry is looking for is something more, I guess, longstanding and permanent and continuing. Um, are those, uh, minutes or, um, agendas publicized like other industry advisory groups? Like what you have with the, you have the recreational fishing and the commercial fishing groups, that their minutes are published and, and, and on, on the website, is there, is that done with these two groups?
Uh, no, these are informal advisory groups that the, um, uh, the, our former minister, the Deputy Premier Barilaro, established.
Yeah.
Um, uh, so, uh, they, they're not in the same form as those, uh, there, in fact, I think may well be statutory committees, those other ones that you're referring to.
Yeah.
Um, so th, these are informal groups, the minister's established, uh, for his own purposes. And our subsequent ministers have, um, you know, I mean, they need to make their own decisions about how, like, uh, the consultation forums that they wish to have. Um, and as, as it turns out, um, the, um, the, our, our current minister has only recently made a decision in relation to recalling the softwood and hardwood industry advisory groups uh, in the near future, but that hasn't been, um, the, the, uh, when, when those meetings will actually be, hasn't been, um, passed on to the industry as yet in terms of, uh, setting up arrangements.
Okay, sure. I might go to Mr Barrett and then about to get an even spread.
Um, yeah, more questions about societal farm forestry and essentially how do we get more people involved in it? I understand the codes were one way to provide that ongoing certainty. Are we working on any other programs to attract more people in it? Are other people, other jurisdictions offering incentives to get, to get more of our, I guess, private estate? More of private estate?
Yeah, thanks, thanks for the question. Look, I think a couple of things just to begin with. It's up to the individual farmer to make their decisions in terms of their long-term planning. I think a couple of things to note, both Northern America and Northern Europe, um, agroforestry or farm forestry is much more a central part of how people do business on their farms. So they combine agriculture and, and forestry day-to-day in terms of how they're doing their planning. Um, that also enables them to diversify their income. So if there's a drop in commodity prices for, say, graziers or cropping, they have an, an alternative revenue stream as well. If you look at internationally, there's a couple of programs which have been really successful in, um, combining incentives to get people to manage their forest more effectively. So the USDA runs a forest stewardship program and there's a similar sort of program in Northern Europe. They combine both incentives to increase, um, the health and condition of those forests. So you improve productivity but also environmental outcomes. And that was one of the key recommendations that was made by Professor Ben Claude when P N F codes first came into practice, that we should consider incentive programs to help bridge that gap between, um, managing a crop that doesn't come to fruition for 40 to 50 years compared to, to other forms of agriculture which have greater liquidity. Um, and I think our interest will be to get farmers to think about managing their forests in the long term, um, to produce both protections for the environment but also productive outcomes for industry.
Can I just very quickly, uh, USDA, I think CANTO would log it if you could just tell us what that stands for. I'm just the United States Department of Agriculture, but is that correct?
That's correct, yes. And I'm happy to provide on notice, um, some of their papers in terms of the guidelines that they have.
Yeah. Can I follow on from Mr Barrett's question? Um, part of this, i- i- is, is it not true that a part of this revolves in New South Wales around the extension services provided by LOS? Um, and in that light, just what are we doing to assist farmers with extension services in the P N F space, particularly in light of the new codes?
Yeah, happy to take that. So we inherited the approvals function in, in 2018. And every year since we've had that function, we've run extension programs with local farmers. So we ran a webinar series last year in the wake of COVID that was attended by over 300 farmers. We've also run a couple of, we've run a couple of extension programs around significant events. So in, in lieu of the bushfires in 29, 20, 2019, 2020, we ran a series of workshops on controlling erosion and increasing natural vegetation and ground cover, um, in the regions. We've also run or about to run on the back of the floods, a similar sort of program. We've, um, collaborated with the Soil Knowledge Network and run some webinars on controlling erosion and managing forests that have been impacted by the floods. So we've run some webinar series on those. And we're looking to go and do on-ground extension around that as well. In terms of the new codes of practice, uh, we've run, uh, a series of workshops online initially. Um, we'll be going to the Red Gum and North Coast to make sure that people understand what their obligations are under the new codes of practice. Uh, and before those codes of practice came into effect, we wrote to each and every landholder in New South Wales that has a P N F plan um, and made it clear to them that there was a new rule set and to get in contact with us if they needed assistance implementing that rule set.
Have you increased the resources for your extension services? Has there been, in light of the new codes, have you sort of ramped up or geared up a bit further than would be normal?
So if you go back to the N R C report, Mr Beach, um, there was, I guess, four key themes within the N R C report. One was about adoption of the codes, then there was a series of funding. And that is for both LOS and the N R C. There was some further commentary about the way which code should be revised into the future. And finally, there was a recommendation regarding a commo unit between, um, D P A and LOS, which we are working on. Um, in terms of budget, um, we are awaiting the outcomes of the budget process for.
As we are.
Twenty-three, Mr Beach.
Thank you.
So, and, um, D, uh, D P I is working collaboratively with, with local land services in relation to, as I mentioned earlier, in relation to measures to try and promote private investment, home farm investment and plantation forestry. Um, and consideration of the, of the potential use of their, or development of their forests, their native forests for P N F. Um, we are participating in field days and, and those types of things in relation to our, particularly our plantation um, regulatory functions and the, and the opportunities offered to landholders in relation to undertaking plantation investment.
Yep.
Um, and as I mentioned earlier, also, uh, development of resources such as a carbon guide and those types of materials that would, that would help that type of investment decision. Um, and further to one of the questions that Mr Field asked earlier about our focus in relation to plantation development, it is very clearly on trying to encourage, um, plantation development on private land. There's, there's a lot more land under private, in private hands than there is in government hands. Um, so we, we certainly do have a very clear focus on trying to promote and encourage forestry as a consideration when landowners are determining how to make best use of their, of that asset.
Can I, Scott, sorry, I just want to finish up this, uh, extension services.
Yeah.
So I think it'd be really important if we could, uh, just, um, I guess, Mr Orr or, or, uh, Dr Tyndall, but just how important is extension services in the P N F space? Um, and do we evaluate, like you're going through an exercise of consultation at the moment, do you actually stop and evaluate to see whether it's effective? So how, two, two, two parts. One is how just how, how important are extension services in this space? And do we evaluate them from time to time to see that we're getting it right?
Uh, look, I'm happy to answer that. I'm, I'm working from memory, but, um, we did an evaluation process after the most recent extension services, um, and webinars and on-field, um, demonstrations that we did. Um, that research found that about 82% of the attendees thought that they had a better knowledge of how to manage their forests in the long term. In short, the answer to your question is it's really critical for both LOS and, I understand, the EPA will be in the following session for us to get out on ground and to be providing people with information on how to improve their outcomes um, on farm and on ground. So, um, I kind of overemphasize the need for, for us to do that.
Okay.
I'll just pick up on your last comment there, um, Mr Millam, about, you know, trying to increase the private plantations. You've got this goal of a 10% increase by 2030. Do you have a set of milestones between now and 2030 where you say, okay, we should be at, you know, 2% or 3% increase at this stage or 4% or what have you? And what are you, what else are you doing besides turning up to a couple of shows? And I've been a bit facetious, turning up to some shows and, and talking to private landholders. Like, are you confident that you'll get that 10% increase purely through that private, private landholder investment? Or are you considering, you know, dipping your toe into state-owned plantation as well?
Uh, there, there is, uh, public funding, as I, as I mentioned before, public funding being provided, equity funding being provided to the forestry corporation in relation to expanding their plantation estate. It's been provided, um, some years ago, but questions in relation to, uh, the corporation's, um, this, a strategy in relation to their plantation estate, uh, should be addressed to the corporation, the best address to them. Uh, and I understand that we're here late on today.
Do you, do you have a figure on, uh, we already had them, do you have a figure on what equity funding you provided? What was the, do you know what the figure was?
I should know that offhand, but sorry, apologies, I'll take on notice and get, come back to you with that number. I used to not, it's one of those things that slipped out of my head. Um, the, in, in relation to the target, um, we, we, New South Wales, we, we've adopted that target as a New South Wales target, um, uh, as, uh, in, 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 in response, or not just in response, but in sort of coordination with the Commonwealth's target, uh, the, the, the Billion Trees Announcement, um, from Hiro Sogo. Uh, but we also see it as an essential part of the, um, of the challenge, of, of meeting the challenge of increasing demand in the community for timber. Um, we're, we're, we're pretty confident. We're, we're, we're pretty confident that with what we see in relation to the improving economic opportunities arising from plantation forestry, that this enhanced extension effort in collaboration with local land services and the provision of the top of resources that will help farmers and other landholders make informed decisions, better informed decisions about the opportunities that plantation forestry offer them, that we will see us in giving increase in the plantation area.
So going back to the first part of my question, you know, do you have a set of milestones that you're going to tick off as you go, as you get towards twenty thirty where you can say, okay, we're not, we are, or we are, you know, on track, you know, and, and, and we, and we make some adjustments to recalibrate, or, you know, we might be, we might be ahead of ourselves and we can, you know, push for a fifteen percent increase or a twenty percent increase, like.
So we haven't set ourselves like a sliding scale between now and twenty thirty, but we are monitoring it on an annual basis when we, when we get our updated figures to see what's happening in the plantation estate. And that will, and we only, we only set this target, it's only been set in, in the last twelve months as part of the department's new strategic plan. So we, we've, we've just launched into that, into that target. And, and we'll be certainly keeping close, paying close attention to how we're going. And over the next year or so, seeing whether or not the initiatives that are in place are starting to have effect.
And just, I guess, wrapping that all up, that ten percent increase is on plantation size and doesn't necessarily take into consideration, I guess, innovation and efficiencies that is, you know, that we're gaining through technology. We heard from some witnesses today that, you know, technology's improved and they're able to starting to be able, you know, a little bit more out of logs that they historically wouldn't have. So that ten percent doesn't, doesn't take into those efficiency gains through technology, does it?
No, no. So they, they, they would then be on top of the actual area gain. So we're, so let's say we are aiming for ten percent increase in the planned area of plantation. If there are, if there are other efficiency gains, productivity gains associated with the, well, arising from improved use of the, of the products of the, of that plantation area, then that's an additional benefit.
Mr Barrett.
Chair, speaking of efficiency gains, we've talked a bit about research and innovation and looking at better ways to use a resource. We heard earlier that probably the private sector was best placed to do that. The Forest Industries Innovation Fund seems to be a good way for government to support that. What are some of the wins we've got out of that? What are some of the projects and advances we've got from that fund?
So that fund, which was established in two thousand and eighteen, that was a, a thirty-four million dollar investment at that time over, uh, since that time. I can only talk in general terms because most of the, the projects that have been funded through that process under that fund are commercially confidence. But we've seen investments in, in technology to improve milling efficiency. So in other words, getting, getting more commercial product from a sawlog than you would have got previously. We've seen investments in the use of mill residues, so in turning a waste into an actual valuable product for them, either in terms of a salable product or in, in energy generation to reduce their, their milling costs. There are just some examples of the types of things that we've seen through, developed through that fund, through loans under that fund over the last four years.
Sorry, are they grants or is that knowledge that's shareable across the industry?
Yeah, so they, so they are loans, so they, the government will get its capital back over time.
But to those individual businesses or is this technology that's developed that so would be shared between businesses?
So the, the loans are to individual businesses to undertake investments which they are sharing in. So in, in their own operations. But there is, the, the types of technologies that we've seen being adopted put in place through that fund are not technologies that, they're not secret, that's right. So they're, they're technologies that the industry is aware of and, and what these loans, what we're seeing is is effective demonstration of the use of those technologies in practical operations that then other businesses that are similar could certainly look over the fence and, and determine whether or not that's an investment that they would also like to make.
So just looking at the submission that said it was thirty-four million over four years, but you said that it's going to remain open. We've sort of had that probably four-year mark now and you've only spent eleven point three million, that was May last year. Is it the intention that you will keep going until you spend that thirty-four million? Or is there an intention to keep rolling this fund over?
So I, I can update those figures as of, as of Friday. We've actually, well, we've already, we have already committed about twenty point nine million. And there is a, there are a number of further applications that have come in. We've actually had six further applications come in over the last couple of weeks, which are currently being processed, which would actually fully exhaust that fund if those applications are all approved.
What's the timeframe for repayment?
So they are twenty-year loans. They're managed through the Rural Assistance Authority. In the same way that they administer the, the Farm Industry Innovation Fund.
Now that we've mentioned the RIA, I should just declare I'm a former director of the RIA.
Didn't do that before.
I just had some questions about PNF if I could. Has any work been done to estimate the likely yield from the private native forestry estate as a result of the changes to the code?
Not, not at a site scale or a landscape scale. So one of the key recommendations of the NRC's report, which is supported by the Minister for Agriculture, is that we build a forest management improvement program that has an EER framework for PNF. And I'd imagine some consideration of both the condition of forests at a scale and the relative impact of PNF will be part of that program.
Oh, I, I just mean yield. You're hoping to get some more timber out of the private estate, right? What, have you got any targets in mind?
There's no specific targets, Mr Field. And I, I think in particular, in contrast to state forests, it's up to individual landholders to decide when they're harvesting and the intensity of that harvesting and extent of that harvest. As you can imagine, with a hundred and thirty thousand farmers across New South Wales, they make decisions for all sorts of reasons. Some of those decide to combine forestry with their agriculture and cropping. Others don't, but at the end of the day, our job is to provide them with a framework and codes of practices that are easier to use, that improve outcomes, that the decision is ultimately theirs.
I want to clarify some of the, the area confusions, you know, the codes are in place. So there are some areas of corkwale habitat under various Cape bombs, which are, have existing PNF approvals on them, which have been grandfathered through. There is a lot of different information out there. I think you've now said publicly fifty-eight PNF plans covering about five hundred hectares. When we last spoke, you know, we had a bit of a discussion. Just want to clarify, is that your position? That the grandfathered through areas of PNF approvals cover just five hundred hectares?
That, no, less than five hundred hectares, Mr Field. So in terms of that attachment, Appendix D, which is a mapping that is attached to the codes of practice. The initial reference in the NRC's report was six thousand hectares. Both the Minister for Agriculture and Minister for Environment agreed to include some additional areas that were, strictly speaking, defined as primary and preferred habitat.
This was because of the different definitions in the various Cape bombs, right?
That's right, the approved Cape, Cape bombs that are in place. Of that ten thousand odd hectares, there's fifty-eight plans in place that are existing PNF plans that have a transitional arrangement and that covers less than five hundred hectares. In relative terms, those plans are relatively small in size, so less than ten hectares each.
Okay, so you've picked up a broader area and when you consider that broader area, it's still only fifty-eight plans, no, no more than five hundred hectares. So what about dual consent now? How big is the area of private native, like private land, which might be eligible for private native forestry plans, which would be restricted because of current dual consent arrangements? Because I think in your twenty seventeen report, you put it as high as a hundred and ten thousand hectares or something like that.
I'm not aware of that report, but I'd have to take that on notice. The analysis that I've seen is limited to Northern New South Wales. And obviously there's some variability.
I think most of it is in Northern New South Wales.
There's forests throughout.
Oh, no, I know that, but in terms of where the dual consent is being applied, right, this is what the hotspots are in Northern New South Wales.
Take it on, yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, then I might put that on, on notice if I could. And I just.
Sorry, what were you putting on notice, Mr Field?
Well, how much, how much private land, forested land that would be eligible for private native forestry plans is subject to dual consent arrangements whereby they'd need to get approval from the local government at this point, at the council at this time, for, to be able to do private native forestry, even if they had a plan. Because I'm not sure you're going to tell me, but it is the intention of government to bring legislation to, to correct that.
Matterful government.
Yes, okay. Can you advise though, is legislation required? Is that the understanding of the department that legislation would be required to do that?
That's our understanding.
Just one last one on koalas. I mean, there's a recognition that a broader area of private forestry is now subject to the koala prescriptions in the code. But there is concern about the reduction in the tree sizes that have to be retained from thirty centimeters to twenty centimeters, even though there's more trees that need to be retained. Now, I think some of this falls out of your science to a degree, Dr Law, you know, the the decision was taken to reduce the retention size, in part because the science suggested koalas are okay with smaller trees. That'd be a fair way to put it. Would you, would you agree?
I'm not sure whether I'd characterize it as the koalas are okay with smaller trees. I think the research shows that they use a range of species. I'm conscious that I'm sitting next to Dr Law who could probably provide some more information. And I'm also conscious that in the next section you have the New South Wales Natural Resources Commission. One of their key findings was what is important in terms of that habitat is the nutritional quality of the trees that are available, and not such, not necessarily just the size and doing better of those trees, but Dr Law might be able to add something.
And I'm happy for Dr Law to do that, but again, this is the NIFA analysis, you know, given the, you know, the capacity of trees when they go from twenty to thirty centimeters, it's a if you're, if you're reducing the retention requirements, the analysis is that if it's good koala habitat, there's a lot of koala trees with the retention requirements in there and the reduced size, as much as sixty-five percent of koala trees within that particular forest area could still be logged and meet the prescriptions of, of the PNF code. Is that better or worse than the current CFIWA prescriptions in, in your view, Dr Law, I guess, who's looked at these things more closely than anyone else?
If I might provide a response to that question, because it's not purely a question of science, it's a question of of ineffective government policy that's been reflected in those instruments. And a landing has been reached in relation to what's in the PNF code and what's in the Coastal IFAA. And we're not really in a position to comment on whether or not those landings are appropriate.
Okay. I'm, yeah, I'm happy to.
Yeah, given that it's, it's pretty close to time, I would just provide you you an opportunity if there's anything that you think we've missed or misconstrued or you, you want to wrap up?
I have an answer to one of the questions taken on notice in relation to new plantation, plantings, new plantation area in the last ten years. Since two thousand and twelve, we've had now a hundred and twenty thousand hectares of additional plantation. I cannot give you a breakdown between softwood and hardwood.
If you put that on notice, that'd be good, just to break it down.
I don't, I'm sorry, I meant we, we can't actually give you a breakdown. Our, our regulatory database, we're not always providing information on whether or not the plantation proponent of what they're going to plant.
Okay, that's all.
And then whether or not they're planting what they said they were going to plant, that's right.
I could just offer a quick correction, Chair, if I had time. I think earlier I quoted eighty-two percent of landholders felt that they had a better understanding of forest management. That figure was actually eighty-five percent on the back of the engagement that we've done and I'm happy to provide that report.
If there's nothing else, I think this process of you things you told on notice, so the committee secretary will be in touch and you'll have twenty-one days to get back to us. But once again, thank you for coming again and, and just helping us wrap this all up. It's much, much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your assistance with the PNF stuff too.
Yeah, that was great.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Welcome back to our last session for our final hearing of the inquiry into this long-term sustainability future of the timber and forest products industry. Our last witnesses today are representatives from the Natural Resource Commission and the Environmental Protection Agency. So starting with our first witness on our, our left, noting that we don't need to swear in you, Mr Wilder, or you professor, because you were sworn in from a previous hearing. So we'll just start with you, Ms Miles. If you could state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or affirmation.
It's Jackie Miles. I'm the acting executive director of Regulatory Policy Initiatives and Advice for the EPA. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Ms Moore?
My name is Jacqueline Moore. I'm the acting chief executive officer of the Environment Protection Authority. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Now, would either agency like to make a short opening statement?
Yes, the Natural Resources Commission would like to. So thank you for the opportunity to address you all again today. Since we last met in December, the commission has continued to oversee the Forest Monitoring Improvement Programme on behalf of the New South Wales Government and monitoring for the Coastal IFAA on state forests. And also has reviewed the private native forestry codes. I noted this morning there was some discussion in this inquiry about the recent Threat and Species Scientific Committee determination on the koala being listed as endangered and the impacts of native forestry upon koalas. I also note that the scientific committee mentioned a range of human activities, including timber harvesting as resulting in loss, fragmentation and degradation of koala habitats. However, the committee further detailed the impacts from such human activities as urban expansion, mining and land clearing, noting that clearing for grazing accounted for most of the loss of koala habitat. Unlike the other activities, the scientific committee did not expand on its rationale for mentioning timber harvesting. The New South Wales Forest Monitoring Improvement Programme's work to date has found the overall forest extent in the North East, Southern and Eden RFA regions has remained relatively stable on public land, with increases on private land caused by thickening around the edges of existing forest extent. Note, these regions don't include western slopes and plains. Overall, from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand and eighteen, there has been a six percent increase in forest extent within these RFA regions. Where there were losses in canopy cover, it was largely due to drought and wildfire. Data suggests native forestry operations only accounted for one point eight percent of canopy loss in any given year. And this was offset by natural regeneration. Overall, in two thousand and eighteen, compared to nineteen ninety-eight, when our data started, there has been an increase in canopy cover on state forests of a minor one point six percent. I.e. there hasn't been habitat loss on state forests over that time. Some of our other research work we've commissioned has shown there's no evidence that selective harvesting has a negative impact upon koalas. The researchers from DPI Forest Science, who you heard from earlier today, found koala density was higher than anticipated and was not reduced by selective harvesting. Koala density was mostly similar between state forest and national park sites. Some species, such as tallow wood and gray gum, have higher nutritional quality than other species such as black bud. Selective harvesting at the treatment sites did not significantly change canopy tree species composition and therefore is not expected and therefore is not expected to impact on nutritional quality of koala feed trees. Tree species composition, not tree size, is the key determinant of koala habitat nutritional quality. Under the New South Wales Koala Strategy, uh, we will continue to research the impacts of harvesting upon koalas. There are still a lot more questions to be answered. In the evidence we have gathered to date, climate change and changing fire regimes remains the greatest driver and risk to forest ecosystem health. Researchers at the University of Wollongong found the twenty nineteen twenty wildfire has increased the fire frequency across coastal forests, both national parks and state forests. Larger area of forest will be exposed to a higher frequency and more intense fires under predicted climate change. In other work, the cross-agency and university biodiversity research team developed nearly four hundred and fifty fauna models based on data collected over five thousand seven hundred sites and found that sixty-nine percent of the seventy-eight threatened fauna species assessed were at risk by twenty seventy under predicted climate change. Data-driven decision-making is essential to meet this future challenge and ensure government can continue to meet its commitments for ecologically sustainable forest management. The Forest Monitoring Improvement Programme has delivered critical data for decision-making and this programme needs to continue into the future. The recently approved PNF codes are a good example of regulatory improvement. They shift towards outcomes, the environmental protections are proportional to the risks, they are based upon the latest knowledge and commit to further knowledge gathering, providing certainty for landholders while also providing mechanisms for review and adaptation. There is still much to learn, but we have the systems and plans in place to gather this knowledge and apply it. Thank you.
And given that was a pre-prepared statement, you're happy to pass up the hand side so they can get it wrong. Thank you. Any statements from, okay, well, I guess given this is the last hearing, we want to try and wrap everything up in a nice, uh, pretty bundle and bow. And I thought we'd offer you guys the opportunity to correct anything or, uh, you update us on anything in terms of your submissions. Um, noting, Mr. Wild, you've just helped provide some clarity on a few things there. I'd maybe offer the same to, uh, the EPA, probably drawing your attention to Wemble down in our South Coast visit.
Mogo.
Mogo, we heard some, uh, I guess testimony, um, that, uh, the EPA is quite heavily reliant on, I guess, citizen science or citizen investigation and reporting. I don't think that would be a mischaracterization of what we heard, that they do a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of taking photos and GPS locations of where they think forestry operations aren't up to scratch and then they, and then they send it to you. Um, so I guess I would seek a response to, I guess, that statement that you are heavily, heavily reliant on, I guess, non-government employee, non-government people, citizens, uh, in doing a lot of the investigative work regarding forestry, uh, non-compliance.
Um, I would certainly say that we welcome, um, the contribution of members of the community and their reporting of, um, matters of concern to them. And we encourage people to share that information with us. Um, we obviously do our own investigations and we have approximately, I think at the moment, around three hundred and fifty authorised officers who have, um, the statutory powers and responsibilities to conduct forestry inspections, investigations and compliance work. And, uh, they are very, we are active in that space. So whilst we do, um, welcome and use information provided from the community, we also undertake our own, um, analysis and we have our own programme of compliance and we certainly, um, have our own compliance programmes and our own officers who carry out that work.
Sure. And, and I guess this is why I'm putting, so you say you have a, a right reply. That three hundred and fifty authorised officers, um, are they solely looking at forestry or they're spread across, they're spread across the state and they're spread across obviously the wide range of, um, I guess, areas of investigation?
That's correct.
Yeah. So you don't have anyone specific, you don't have a team specifically dedicated to forestry or specifically dedicated to o- other known polluters or other known people that need investigation? You don't, you don't, I guess?
In terms of our investigative officers, we don't have specialist, well, sorry, I take that back. We do have some specialist investigators who focus on sort of major crime, but in terms of the authorised officers, um, they would look at, uh, at a range of areas, including forestry. Um, but in addition to those authorised officers, we do have environmental experts within the agency and other people with, um, particular expertise that would also be involved in forestry matters.
Is, is there anything else that you have heard, um, over the course of this inquiry, whether it's through submissions or through, uh, evidence at hearings that you feel like you want to correct or update or, or clarify?
Uh, I think.
Balance?
I think there may have been some suggestion, and I'm not sure the name of the gentleman, that we were perhaps biased in our approach. And I would say that we, um, obviously are not biased in, you know, approach to our compliance activities.
Sure. I might just open it up to questions then.
Yeah, I'll go. Thanks. Um, I just want to ask a question to, uh, see as a question to, um, to Mr. Wild. Uh, at one of our hearings, the executive summary of the NRC's final report on the coastal IFOA was tabled. Um, and on the very last page, recommendation nine, uh, it says that the New South Wales Government should increase investment in large-scale, regionally-coordinated pest and weed control on state forests to address risks from incursion and predation. Um, I pretty much use this inquiry as a forum to highlight the issues around weeds and pests in New South Wales and its impact, uh, well, negative impact really, uh, in a number of ways, uh, on the environment as well as, um, its impact on, uh, particularly forest management. Um, can you probably just, for the sake of the committee, go through why, what, what drew the NRC to make that recommendation? And just what are you looking for when you say, uh, increase investment in large-scale, regionally-coordinated pest and weed control on state forests? The reason I ask that is there are already, um, you know, regional weed and pest committees. So can you sort of elaborate as to how you got to that recommendation and why?
Time for you to. Uh, that recommendation you're referring to is actually a cabinet of confidence, uh, document. So I can talk more broadly about pest and weed management rather than the specifics of that one, if you like.
We can go more broadly, as long as I get on record that it's a problem and we need money spent on it, I'll be happy.
So, uh, the Natural Resources Commission back in twenty fourteen, uh, first did a review into, uh, weed management in New South Wales uh, and then followed up in twenty sixteen, a statewide review into pest animal management in New South Wales. Uh, and we've also been, um, having some oversight function, if you like, of cash management authorities and local land services in their performance of, uh, pest and weed management duties for some time and been looking more broadly NRM across whole of government and private landholders. So this is an area which is, uh, a shared responsibility and a shared problem. And too often, when there are shared problems, there's not enough action. And that sometimes some landholders, whether they're public or private, carry more of the burden than others, uh, both in impacts and in bearing the costs. And the costs of weeds are quite significant, um, and stretch into the billions, uh, and warrant a significant attention. Historically, historically, uh, the level of effort on some public land managers has been insufficient um, when it comes to pest animals, because quite frankly, uh, wild dogs, foxes, they don't eat trees. So there's not the significant impact upon, um, the business there. There has been increases of effort and attention and resourcing, um, on public land managers, both state forests and national parks uh, in this area. Uh, it is an area which I still think warrants much, much more resourcing and attention. Uh, there are statewide, regional, uh, pest, animal management, weed committees. Uh, the question would be how well-resourced they are, uh, what priorities they're addressing and are those priorities actually the primary priorities from an ecological perspective as well as from an economic and social perspective? Quite often, the impact has been driven by, uh, let us say, whatever issues may be of the day rather than what the issue should be informed by priority, data and risk-based assessments. However, we're here about forestry rather than pest and weeds, so I'll leave it at that.
Well, I just on that, I could say, so we heard in Tumit from the Softwood Working Group, uh, their own, their own assessment or analysis they had had to take and there was a, just blackberry growth on its own in the softwood plantations was, uh, a productivity hit of two and a half thousand dollars per hectare per year. So if you look across a thirty-year lifespan of a softwood plantation, I suggest that's a pretty substantial monetary impact, uh, for the state government to absorb just from one pest, just from one weed, that being blackberries. There are others. So I think this committee's quite rightly been looking at a range of, and it came from Laurel, and the North Coast was raised with this as an issue as a part of the PNF. So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you've put those comments on, on the record for me. Um, can I just go, so the two thousand and fourteen report that you were talking about, but, uh, it's your, the NRC report? Um, can, the updated figure, have you, have we updated the, the figures on, at all, on what the impact is to the state GSP? Like, there was a two and, two and a half billion dollars? Is that your number or it might be someone else's number?
Uh, from, our number was back in twenty fourteen, I think from memory, one point four billion dollars was the economic impact assessment of from weeds upon state.
Yep.
GDP, uh, might have been one point two, uh, but that's my, my recall from eight years ago.
Excellent, thank you. Do you think it's timely to have that revisited?
Yes.
Yep. Um, just so you know, for the record, I have wrote to the relevant minister, he said that he didn't think it was timely. Um, but my view is those figures do need updating and that work, that body of work which was really good and the two thousand and sixteen report, uh, it does impact forestry, uh, as well as the whole of the state. And I think personally that we should be asking your organisation to go away and revisit that work to at least contemporise it.
We are welcome.
Yep. I'll let it, leave it there.
Leave it there. Uh, Mr. Phil?
Sure, Chair, thank you. Um, perhaps just on, uh, that cabinet in conference report quickly, and I'm not asking you to go into it, but I just, could you just, um, be clear? I think we might have, uh, already tried to ask questions about this first time around, but just be clear. This was a report you were commissioned to do to look at post the fires, the, whether or not the controls or what particular controls or additional prescriptions might be suitable, um, in state forest harvesting as a, as a result of the impact of the fires. Is that correct? Are you able to just be clear about that?
Yes.
Yeah. And you provided that report to government in the middle of twenty twenty-one? Are you able to confirm that?
Yes.
Yeah. And so about nine months later and there hasn't been a response at this point from the government, nor have they made that report publicly available. Can you confirm that?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I would like to, and obviously the report is in the public realm, um, but I'm not asking a comment on the report as such, but I would just speak in generalities. Um, and I appreciate your comments, um, of re-koalas, but I wanted to go to one of the other aspects, um, of, um, a concern about the impacts on biodiversity of the current, um, prescriptions, uh, in the CFIWA and particularly post-fires. There's concerns that there's been a huge loss of hollow-bearing trees as a result of the fires and that the combined impact of the fires and the current prescriptions in the CFIWA is having a pretty substantial impact on hollow-bearing trees. Without going into the information in the report, can you provide anything to the committee that speaks to that issue? And I guess I'm, talking about the future of the timber industry, I'm concerned that, um, it is having an impact that, uh, not just on koalas but on those many hollow-bearing dependent, um, species out there. So I'm just asking if you can provide any evidence to the committee to that effect?
Certainly. So if I'm talking about other work that we've re, we've initiated under the Forest Monitoring Improvement Programme, which address issues of hollow-bearing trees and key fauna species. Uh, we've currently commissioned ANU led by Professor Phil Gibbons to do modelling of the hollow-bearing tree resource under coastal IFOA conditions. And, uh, that work is now currently under review. Uh, so shortly that work will be, uh, released and will be made publicly available, which is looking at the modelling of what resource there will be for hollow-bearing trees in the future under certain prescriptions of the coastal IFOA. So it doesn't look at the landscape level, it doesn't look at post-fire level, it looks at these prescriptions. If they continue in isolation, what is the model of projection? And what does that mean? Well, it comes through the importance of having recruitment trees. So if you look at in relation to fires, when there is a massive fire event, which happens like in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, where there were across state forests and national parks, significant widespread areas of intense fire, uh, then there is also significant impacts upon hollow-bearing trees. Uh, and so then the question is where is the future hollow-bearing tree resource coming from, given that now at least a hundred and twenty years to form hollow? So we're doing work on that respect and we've also done work, uh, on, as I mentioned before, on fauna species. And those, you know, sixty-nine percent of, um, threatened species which were modeled to be at risk of climate change up until twenty seventy, the group which are more at risk in that study are hollow-dependent fauna.
Now, the, uh, correct me.
As well as, yeah, not frog or two, but it is also, it does stand out to be the hollow-dependent fauna.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it was the recruitment tree aspects that were removed from the CFIWA have substantially changed when it was reviewed, um, last, wasn't it? Well, that was one aspect that was changed in the CFIWA when it was reviewed in twenty eighteen. So this would be sort of a revisiting of some, some of those things that we had originally and that.
In the, in the coastal IFOA, there were some changes made, which instead of having specific protections, there was also more landscape-level protections for hollow-bearing trees. Uh, it was also very important to remember that the coastal IFOA is a multi-landscape scale protection. So in recognizing that, um, in regulating coastal IFOA harvesting, you're also recognizing that on average it's fifty percent of that landscape already protected and that the coastal IFOA introduced wildlife tree clumps and, uh, wildlife habitat clumps and tree retention clumps, which were also meant to be permanent protections, uh, for areas. So there's those other landscape scale protections to offset some of those specific protections that you're referring to.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, there's been a bit of discussion around, you know, the wood supply assumptions and, you know, sustainable yield and then the independent analysis, which raises some, you know, questions about whether or not that meets, you know, whether or not it's totally accurate. There wasn't a lot of on-field work. This has come up in some discussions. Um, I noted that, um, uh, in one of your reports, you've identified that in June four, I think it is, examining the extensive dataset, an extensive dataset of wood supply and related factors over seventeen years, two thousand and three, twenty nineteen, it's due to report relatively soon. When would we be likely to see that? Because I think it would be of real interest to this, uh, inquiry.
Uh, yes, it's currently under review, so we will shortly be sharing that with, um, the steering committee for Forest Monitoring Improvement Programme. Uh, and then, uh, as soon as that's been reviewed, I'll, uh, undertake to write to the Chair and share that report uh, with this inquiry committee. Uh, at the moment, over that time period, and it's still subject to expert review, technical working groups, et cetera. But it does show a twenty-five percent decrease in, uh, wood supply since, um, the nineties through to twenty eighteen, uh, uh, on the data that I've seen. And that's across all and most of that is driven by a loss of pulp. But there's a fifteen percent decrease in high-quality sawlog.
And what's driving that? If I can get a preview of the report?
Some of these issues were addressed by Forest Corp this morning, uh, which is talking about those, um, government decisions being made, buybacks, allocations of our ability, um, you know, they're much better placed to describe all of that.
Okay. Um, I recall some, uh, I've, I've been going back and have a looking at some of their, um, yield assessments. You know, there was that buyback of the, what, fifty thousand cubes from Boron in twenty. You know, there was that buyback of what fifty thousand cubes from Laurel in twenty fourteen. That seemed to be based on, on some modelling that had shown that it was going to be a pretty substantial drop off, particularly in, in high quality sawlogs, blackbuck on the north coast. Um, but that fifty thousand cubes doesn't really account for this sort of flattening of the sustainable yield models that I'm seeing now. Um, you've done a lot of work in this space and obviously you've seen some of this analysis. Can, can you provide any insight into sort of where the timber's been obtained in the forest to sort of flatten out these? Um, wood supply, um, challenges that forestry corporations faced? I don't know if I'm articulating that very well, but just saying, I'm just trying to make sense of these numbers. I mean, this report's going to be very interesting to see, but just on what's available. On public record at the moment, I can't quite make more stack up.
Uh, well, hopefully when we finalise this report and, uh, we'll answer some of your questions to Mr. Field. At the moment. Uh, there is a clear trend of reduction, as I said, uh. It is, it is dependent upon a range of factors, market forces, uh, government policy decisions. Regulatory impacts, uh, and, uh, you know, threat species protections, um, climatic factors. Floods, impacts, supply, then, uh, then, you know, accessing the plantation resource has, you know, provided a slight buffer to it. Um, so it's, it's a complex story, it's not one which you can have a, a single driver to.
No worries. Chair, I've got some questions, if you have them, happy to go around and start again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for others if they wanna ask a question.
Yeah, just coming back to the biosecurity and, and not trying to downplay the fact that we do need, you know, do more on the biosecurity fact, but. I know blackberries has come up a number of times in this, in this year. How much of a biosecurity risk are blackberries posing within the Forest Corps estate? Given they, if they do everything to stop that spreading onto other areas, yes, it might be an issue for Forest Corps, but they're still making their biosecurity obligation. In stopping that spreading, right?
That's correct, but, Mr. Barrett, sorry, yes.
So, so the biosecurity risk of the blackberries as a specific example isn't probably the top of the list?
Correct.
Um, with the koala stuff you mentioned before, the scientific community didn't sort of specify. Going into much detail about the forest, where, where did they sort of rank it as far as the impacts on koala?
So in their determination, they didn't, uh, necessarily have a clear ranking. But if you look at it in relation to word count, uh, there was two words, timber harvesting. There were then sentences on each of the other human use activities, including agricultural clearing, mining, et cetera. And then there were paragraphs about climate change and wildfire.
Can I just pick up on your first question? You, you said that blackberry wasn't at the top of the list in terms of biosecurity. What, what is at the top of the, the list? And can you confirm that, uh, forestry are managing their obligations in terms of stopping blackberries spreading on to? Um, private property, because I guess we heard testimony in Tumit that said otherwise.
So in relation to the question about blackberries, going back to when we did that twenty fourteen work. We talked to producers in the Tumit region about this issue and this issue did come up and we did talk to, uh, D P I. And other, others who were doing research and prioritisation on this based upon threatened, uh. Based upon risk assessments and blackberries didn't come up to be a priority risk. Uh, what is the current priority risks? I, I can't tell you, uh, we haven't been doing that work recently. What I can say is there needs to be clarity on what those priorities are and there should be. An open and transparent scientifically based risk assessment at the regional level on what the key risks are. And it should also not just be at the regional level, it should also look at our borders. Uh, and the entry and exit points, and there's a range of things there which, again, if we weren't talking about forestry, I'd be very keen to, um, speak further about.
Yeah, sure. That's all very good for the report, thank you. Um, yeah, just quickly, uh, so not just blackberries, but weeds. Uh, did you look at weeds as a contributor to fuel load for bushfires at all?
No.
You didn't? Okay. Would they be a contributor as a fuel load for bushfires? I'm thinking about camp to Laurel, for instance.
Potentially, it's just not an area which I've looked into personally.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, I've got a couple of questions for the E P A, so if it's good to go, because I hate to see you come here and look at a question. Um, I think it would be very good if you could, if the E P A could just advise, uh, your role. Your compliance role, uh, for P N F, uh, particularly the new codes, just if you could explain how your role works. Uh, in, in that, that parallel on that arrangement.
Sure, so, uh, we have responsibility for regulating, um, compliance with the codes. And with the P N F plans, um, we work closely with local land services to, um. Ensure that we have the information that we need to undertake that role. Um, I think you might have already heard earlier today. Um, we're putting in place a memorandum of understanding with local land services so that we, um. Set out, uh, respective responsibilities and how we intend to cooperate, um, in terms of. The E P A also inputting into things like development of protocols and guidelines. Um, and that, uh, M O U will also cover what kind of information sharing arrangements we have in place. Um, and obviously, uh, we will be working very closely with them to ensure that we're giving consistent messaging to stakeholders. Um, and landholders.
Okay, thank you. If we end, uh, before us, a bit early today, Dr. Kelly from the Department of Planning and Environment, and we explored mapping. Um, a little bit, um, how important is the, the mapping that is currently available in your, to your compliance role? But one, one for P N F, but two for much broader for forest, state forestry.
Yeah, we certainly rely on mapping. I might defer to Jackie to give you a bit more detail around that, but it's certainly one of the inputs that's very important for us.
Yeah, that's been one of the most beneficial changes in both the coastal I F O A and the new P N F codes. Um, having a map enables us to know exactly what rule set applies on, at what location and. Uh, it, it makes it easier for landholders or forestry corp to comply with the rules, but also for us to assess compliance. Uh, it provides a degree of certainty, um, around our regulatory programme. It can be a really effective tool around how we prioritise, uh, or risk assess operations and prioritise our regulatory effort. Um, including how we engage with landholders to help them comply, as well as what we do harvest, uh. Post-logging, uh, inspections to assess compliance. So mapping is, there's huge amounts of, uh, uh. Technology advances that are going on at the moment that can help inform our compliance programmes of both, uh, the maps that are included. In these, uh, regulatory instruments, but also satellite imagery that help us understand where different operations are occurring in way.
How heavily do you rely on those maps?
They're, we are very reliant on those maps in terms of understanding what rules apply where. But in terms of satellite imagery, up until now, uh, it's been a, we've been quite reliant on that in terms of understanding where private native forestry is occurring. Um, one of the good benefits of the new P N F codes is that we'll also be getting, uh, notifications from landholders. Prior to them commencing harvesting, so the satellite imagery on top of that gives us a very good picture to inform our compliance programme.
And is that one of the main changes for your agency in the new P N F arrangements where landholders will now advise? Before they start the process of harvesting as opposed to previously?
Yeah, that's one of, uh, is such a beneficial change, so it, it enables both local land services and the E P A to understand. Uh, thirty days in advance of where harvesting operations will occur and working together, we can make sure that we. Providing the support upfront to landholders to make sure they're in a position to understand the new rules and, but also to comply with them.
So does that mean you then, you, you then go onsite to, uh, to speak with the landholder and L O S and. Sort of ground truth the, um, the map information before they start?
Well, we may do that, but, uh, it, there's a range of other, we may contact the landholder, we may not go on site, um. But, yeah, but that's certainly an option, but we, we could be involved. And certainly if we've got the notification thirty days in advance. That gives us the opportunity to go out on site before, um, any operations commence.
Okay. Sorry, just to confirm that, um, this is part of the M O U, right? You, you've got an insurance, you will get that thirty day notice, because I think under the code that is provided to L O S, so have you reached that agreement with L O S? That it will come straight to you? Because we've been down this track for a while.
The M O U is yet to be signed, but, um, uh, both the, uh, both agencies are very committed to putting that in place as soon as we can.
And just, uh, finally, I know, because I know Mr. Field will probably ask a question about this as well in much more detail. Um, with regard to Forest Corp and its compliance, um, uh. Just how regularly do you meet with Forest Corp to discuss, in a broad sense, on individual cases, but in a broad sense, their obligations? Uh, to, uh, comply with, um, the I F O As and the, the like before they start?
We have a senior officers group, uh, with Forest Corp that meets, um, generally every four weeks, so once a month. Um, and that's an opportunity for us to both put items on the agenda and talk about, um, issues. And in addition to that, I, it's important, um, have an individual meeting with the C E O of Forest Corp New South Wales as well.
So, so we, we could, we could draw from that that Forest Corp are fully aware, fully conversant with their obligations?
I, I can't speak for what Forest Corp are or aren't conversant with, but certainly, um, we, uh, we actively engaged with them. In, um, talking about, uh, their programmes and, um, our understanding of their compliance obligations.
So maybe the other way, but this is it. From that process you've just articulated for the committee. Do you draw comfort from that process that Forest Corp should be aware of their compliance obligations?
It's certainly an avenue for if they've got any doubts or questions they want to raise with us, um, it's certainly an avenue for them to, to, um, clarify those with us. Um, that said, we don't always have reach agreement on, um, what, uh, what might be, uh, the best way forward in there.
Okay, and so when Forest Corp is, uh, I know is breached, um, and then, uh, that, that goes through the legal process. At the end of that, do you actually then, at those meetings, do you discuss with Forest Corp a better way of having circumvented that process, like to comply with that process? Do you have like a discussion post the event?
Like a debrief?
Yeah, you have a debrief?
Uh, we're yet to have one of those, but it's something we could do.
Okay, I think I might leave it there, Justin's proffering.
It's not quite like that. Deputy Chair, um, thank you and, um, thank you for being, um, Miss Miles. And congratulations on your, um, uh, your job as acting C E O, this is probably your last, um, last, uh, performance in that. In that role and I look forward to working with the new C E O as well. And thank you for, you know, your staff have been very available to me in recent years. About understanding, so I do appreciate that. Um, I did just have a, a, a couple of questions in line though with what Mr. Beach was. Um, going on, uh, with then. How long have you been having those fortnightly C E O meetings?
Uh, I've been having those since I've been acting in the role and I've been acting in the role since January. There might have been the odd occasion with Miss them, but they're scheduled in.
Do you know how long for that, they were happening?
Uh, my understanding is that the former C E O would catch up regularly with, um, the, uh, C E O of Forest Corp. But I can't talk to the detail of that.
Um, I mean, it's sort of hardly on the public record, because we do see your compliance activities on the, on, on the public record. But, um, we don't necessarily have a good handle on the number of complaints that are received. Based on your analysis, um, or your, you know, your understanding, it, it does seem to have been an escalation in, um, compliance actions by the E P A. Um, since the fires, uh, in particular. How would you describe the compliance actions of the E P A? And I guess the compliance, um, performance of forestry corporation over the last couple of years compared to the historical norm?
Uh, I would certainly say that, um, we have dedicated resourcing towards, um. Uh, having an active, um, role in forestry compliance, um, especially post bushfires. Uh, this was something that we, uh, have actively engaged in, um, forest corporation. I think, uh, there have been a range of issues, it's on the public record, um, the activities were taken. In, you know, prosecutions through advisory and warning letters throughout the whole gamut.
But it, it'd be fair for, for me to say, and you can maybe just concur, that there have been more infringement notices. Um, more investigations, um, more penalties, and I think you've even got some prosecutions under away, which is an escalation on the historical norm.
Uh, look, I haven't got the figures for the historical.
Do you think you could provide those, just, um, you know, I know it is on the public record, but just so the committee can, you know, perhaps this is a feature of a, a report that might. Come from this committee, it'd be good for us to get that sense. Uh, well, probably just the last five years, I think, which gives us a bit of what we know either side of the fires. Um, how many prosecutions are currently, um, in the underway?
Uh, we've basically had the ten charges before the court in three separate matters, um, I think that's the Lockhead Creek. Um, Dampier and Tomorong, and in two of those matters, uh, Forest Corp have pleaded guilty and. Uh, to some of those charges and sentencing is deferred.
And there are other investigations, yeah, sorry.
Yep, and then the third one, Forest Corp have pleaded not guilty, and there's a hearing being set down for December this year.
And there are a number of other investigations that are ongoing where they've not been concluded and some of these go back quite some time now.
That's correct, yes.
Can you give us a sense of how many ongoing investigations are?
I think there's around fifteen current investigations on the court.
Yeah, against forestry corporation. How many different state forests would that apply to?
I couldn't tell you the number of state forests, I'd have to take them on those, unless Jackie knows.
No, we'll take it on ours.
We'll see, they don't quite understand their obligations, Mr. Beach, maybe. Um, just with regards to authorised officers, you indicated that there's three hundred and fifty authorised. Before the restructure, um, there, you know, there was dedicated, and I, you know, these things happen, but it's just. I, I just want to get a better understanding of this. I've sort of asked questions around this, I think I'm sharpening up, uh, where I'm coming from. Um, how many people were in the dedicated forestry team in the E P A before the restructure?
Uh, I think there, it fluctuated, uh, anywhere between thirty to forty dedicated forestry staff. But that included a mix of both policy, uh, technical staff and authorised officers.
Okay, right, but, yeah, thirty to forty. How many of those are, with that dedicate, historic, history dedicated forestry experience? Are part of three hundred and fifty authorised officers that are, that are, that are currently doing this work with the E P A, do you know? Any sense? I'll have a few to take down.
Yeah, I think we've previously answered how many have left, um, since then. But some of those, uh, staff would not be authorised officers, they might have moved into, um, specialist expert roles.
Totally understand, but yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm keen, I guess, I, I'm keen to get an understanding of whether or not there's been, uh. A diminishing of the knowledge set. This is, you know, there's quite a lot of detail. It's taken me a few years to get a cross out and see if I O A operates, took Bryce less time, but that's unsurprising. Um, so I am just, because there's a frustration in the community that there seems to be a decreased level of knowledge. Um, in the field when it comes to being able to identify a tree species or what's hollow and see if it's starting to scrape. So I'm just keen to understand that. From your perspective, do you think that there needs to be a change in the way? Um, uh, the E P A does its forestry work to reflect the complexity in this space?
I don't think there necessarily needs to be a change, but we're obviously always keen to improve. Um, and make sure that we're, uh, using our regulatory, um, functions in hours appropriately and, you know. Like all agencies, we're looking at continuous improvement across all of the, um, our operations, including in compliance space.
Can I just build on that as well? Not only, like, we often also have a technical team and we draw on expertise from across. Uh, the Department of Planning and Environment or elsewhere as well, including the N R C. So we do have a range of, uh, experts. Who assist us in our compliance activities.
Yeah, no, I, I, I appreciate that, um, but when you get a report and someone's got to go out in the field and, and sort of check it, if, you know. You have to sort of know what you're looking at to, to start. And I'm sure there are other complex areas that the E P A's work, but in this space. I'm pretty engaged with people on the ground who are doing some of this citizen science work that's feeding back to the E P A. I think it's fair to say there's a bit of frustration there, um, and I know you've got, you know, a, a limit to your resources, for sure. I understand that. Um, could I, um. Actually, no, I might leave that. Just with the M O U though, will it be a public document once it's finalised? Actually, no, I might leave that. Just with the M O U though, will it be a public document once it's finalized?
I don't think we've had that discussion yet with um local land services.
Okay. Um, do you know if reporting on the actual yield coming out of those forests will be made public?
I think that would probably be a discussion we have to have with uh local land services. We will be receiving that information as part of the post-harvesting notifications, but it will be a matter for the local land services around whether they're going to be. Publicly disclosing that information.
When the um, the forestry snapshot gets reported, there's a very substantial gap in the P N F. Everything else seems to have a lot of detail and we can draw some conclusions about the state of forests, but P N F is a big gap, so. I, I, could I, you know, there might be something we can pick up in the recommendations, but I think it, it serves us all to understand. The extent to which the private forestry sector is contributing to wood supply um in, in New South Wales. Uh, because it certainly has been an area of frustration for some, some time. Um, uh, on that, do you know when the next forestry snapshot will be published? Because I think it might be a little late for a call.
Uh, the first snapshot reports always will run a little late because they're reliant on being built. Uh, after uh relevant agencies have finished their annual reporting. We draw on annual reporting information to populate it. So I, uh, my understanding is the next one is under development at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jim.
I'm looking for others.
Yeah, questions then, I'll say if I may. How does New South Wales compare in the management of our forestry estate? Compared to other jurisdictions in the country and around the world?
Hmm, uh, that's a very good question. It's difficult to answer because in uh each area, there's different forest ecosystems. So in relation to how well regulated, uh. State forestry is in New South Wales compared to others, it's heavily regulated. Does the coastal I F O A meet? Um, best practice principles? Yes, it's the best practice principles for uh native forestry. Is to have retention forestry, have outcomes-based forestry, identify and focus on the main risks. Retention forestry is about not that you chop down, but what you keep, and the coastal I F O A delivers that. Um, in, uh, you know, north coast, the intensive harvesting, uh, and the selective harvesting is um. Much more carefully managed and in line with the S F M than some other principles in some other jurisdictions, some other civil cultural practices. Um, south of New South Wales. Uh, if you look on forest research. Then other countries are leading the way. So forest research, monitoring and science is an area which we're um lacking in. Uh, leaders are there, Finland and also New Zealand, both from an industry's perspective and from an ecological perspective. So many areas we are very, very good, um, but there are other areas which we can improve upon.
Anything from you, Mister Martin? Nothing more from me? Mister Field?
Well, I might just follow up, then if I, if I could share and then give everyone an early mark for a few minutes. I think at the last um, uh, time you were before us. Uh, Mister Mile, I asked about the forest um improvement, uh, old and forest monitoring um program and its resourcing. Um, I'm sure you were waiting to see what's in the budget, but just a question, have you got any confidence, certainty around the, the funding of that program ongoing at this point?
No. Discussions are continuing, but no, don't have any certainty.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, um, well, I might just offer the opportunity again at the end here, if there's anything you think you. Could have said but haven't said yet, or you, you want to clarify anything, you might have got some answers back from things that you were gonna take on notice.
Or you might have been missed, missed through.
Or missed, missed through, just final chance to um add anything more to the record before we, we call it. No? Excellent. Um, well, thank you very much. Um, you have taken some questions on notice, so the committee secretary will be in touch with you. Uh, and you have twenty one days to get back to us, um, but thank you once again for coming. Uh, not only today, but obviously the earlier session as well. It's um much appreciated. So, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.